You guys rolling? Okay. Good evening and welcome to the special select board meeting, Long Meadow Select Board Meeting of March fourteenth, two thousand and sixteen. We normally would start with a pledge of allegiance. We are in a room that does not have a flag tonight, so we'll dispense with that formality. We are in a conference room instead of our A two fif- or A fifteen. Let's see, comments? Or any comments by the board members?
Yeah.
Go ahead. Excuse me, Mark.
I have a, I just have a quick announcement, and it's in my role as a, as the liaison with the Pioneer Valley Transit Authority. Pioneer Valley Transit Authority is, has requirements on their governance bylaws that they have a citizen representative for paratransit riders, which are also AD, may, can also be ADA riders. For the two-year period fiscal years sixteen and seventeen, that cycle of appointing a citizen representative to the PVTA board has rolled over to Long Meadow, and so we're looking for citizens of, a citizen actually, in the town of Long Meadow who may be interested in serving a term on the Pioneer Valley Transit Authority, representing paratransit, AKA dial-a-ride and/or ADA riders. Anybody who is interested in, in serving this capacity, encourage you to call the town Select Board's office and let your, you know, interests be known, and we will go through the process of selecting a representative to the Pioneer Valley Transit Authority's Board of Directors. This is in addition to our normal community representative. This would be a system-wide ADA paratransit citizen representative. So, if anybody's interested, please let our town hall know. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments?
All right, well, I talked earlier in the, a few months ago, about having a meeting right before the town meeting for all of the folks who are on town committees and boards, and so I put together this idea of a poster that I want to ask each, each group to do, and so it basically, it's pretty simple. It would have the list of the committee members on one side. We'd have a space to tell people who go to this, readers, about the town committee or the mission of that committee, and what need they, they fill in our town, and then another section would look at the kind of contributions that the group has made either recently or over time, and then a list of scheduled meeting dates or other regular gatherings. So, my hope is that each committee, each group of volunteers that work in a group, in a committee or a board would put together a poster like this, and then we would meet just prior to the town meeting on May tenth, and we would have a pizza party, and, and I imagine most of the people on these boards and committees are going to be going to town meeting, and so we'll just give them this format, so that's, I don't know if anyone had any comments on it, but that would be the first step. You're still backing me on this for pizza?
That depends on the budget discussion.
Depends on the budget discussion, all right.
It's a good time for that, isn't it?
Yeah, okay, well, we can move right on.
Now, what are your plans? Do you, are you going to get, coordinate this information and getting it to all the board, committee chairs?
Right, so I'll send this to all the committee chairs.
Okay.
And I'll give them a call and then ask them to put this together, and then if they give it to me on electronic copy, I can, I can get these posters made for them, actually.
Where you work, or what?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that, that helps a considerable amount if you can offer that service, because that makes it easier on the committees.
Yeah, so that's, that's the goal.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, I guess you'll run that through Debbie? Nice place to run it through, and then she can coordinate that going out and getting, coming back in, and...
Mm-hmm, yeah, make sure, okay, yeah, that'd be the best thing.
Anybody else have any comments tonight? Is there any visitor comments tonight? We've got one visitor. No, we got two visitors, three visitors, four visitors. Excuse me. Some of them get to be, some of them almost like board members. Any, any visitor comments tonight?
No, it's a special meeting, I'm waiting for you.
Okay, 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 no other comments by the Select Board members? Okay, we'll move on. Tonight, the primary objective of our meeting is budget discussion, with special emphasis being placed on the capital program and the community preservation program. We've got the two chairs in tonight that's going to make the presentation to the Select Board. This is an annual event that takes place. When we're brought, closing the budget, they'll come in and present their programs and talk, and or have a exchange back and forth. So, we'd like to start, I guess, start with capital? Is that fine?
That's me.
Yeah, we'll start with capital, and it's Dr. Metz is the chairperson of that group, so go ahead and take it, Steve.
Thank you very much, Mr. Foster. I have already provided the board with some written documentation, hopefully you all have received. And to summarize, we were, provided a preliminary budget request by the town manager. The, the initial one would have required two million, one hundred and fifteen thousand and three hundred and ninety dollars, most of which was going to come out of the capital budget. There's also a water and sewer fund, enterprise funds, and the Community Preservation Committee were also going to contribute some of this, which left approximately six, one million, six hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars from the general fund to be utilized for the capital budget. The, our recommendations have been provided in the appendix that was provided you under the capital recommendations. We subsequently, to the receipt of the initial request from the town manager, were told that because of budget considerations, the amount that's going to be available to us is about one million, five hundred thousand. So, in order to try to accommodate this, we provided the Select Board with what our primary recommendations are, along with supplementary recommendations should funds become available, and that latter's been ranked according to what we felt were our priorities. So, I'm perfectly happy to attempt to answer any questions you may have about us.
Go ahead. I mean, I, before we came in here, I took a look at these spreadsheets, and, I don't know, could you kind of take us through it? I mean, like, I'm not quite sure if I'm following everything, so, because I've got appendix A, I've got appendix B. I see some highlights, I'm not sure what that means. Could you just kind of take us through it?
The different appendices have to do with, first one is the initial request from the town manager.
Okay, that's the November seventeenth?
Right.
Okay.
Yes. Our recommendations are really in appendix B.
Okay.
Okay. The, actually, appendix B one, I guess, is what it's really referred to, and they are divided into sections which correspond to the request by the town manager. Some of them we were left untouched, others we tried to prioritize because of the difference in the initial allocation and what we were finally told about. The, I can go through the sections if you'd like to.
That'd be helpful, I mean, because I guess to me, like, just to have, like, you know, like, one thing is window replacement, like, you know, those two words don't give me a great sense of what exactly that is, and I know you've kind of looked at it some more.
Well, I'll start at the top.
Okay.
The development contingency is something that we have included for a couple of years, three years now, I think, because of issues that arose in the past with completion of appropriate planning for some of these projects. That's, project development was included to allow for that kind of process to take place. Project reserve is because...
Sorry, what is project development?
It is the planning and completion of the details of the plans for each project, if, if funds are required for that.
So, this, this would apply to all of the projects?
Yes.
And would this be sort of unanticipated costs?
Yes, sir. The, in the past, the committee has only been provided with, on occasion, with preliminary requests, which have not been thoroughly vetted, and so to provide for that, for those incompletions, we have provided this money to give them a little bit of extra time and effort to provide a more complete estimate of the cost.
So, are you imagining that twenty-five thousand dollars would be spent over the course of the year, or...
Perhaps, it is a contingency fund.
Okay.
Our, our hope is, is that it's not going to be used at all, but this is because we have in the past received some sort of back-of-the-invelope calculations, which were not very useful. This is allowing to help do it.
So, is this, let's say, something costs a little bit more than what they projected, that's where that twenty-five thousand dollars?
No, so permit, some engineering work, if they, if they risk, send back for a little bit more than they, if those plans were incomplete,
I see.
Just provide some money for them to go back and complete their...
To study it?
Yes, well, to, not to study it, but just complete the design work or things like that.
Okay, okay.
The project reserve of ten thousand is, for the other thing you mentioned, is that it's, we are aware that occasionally our cost overruns, very rarely. This is to help provide for that. It's proven to be useful upon occasion.
Okay.
Okay, the technology system was billed as a school battery backup system, but it turns out it's much more involved than that. It's more like a surge protector for the schools, that power should go out and turn back on. Apparently, it's buried, does very bad things to the various switches and servers in this building. So, it seemed like it was sort of a mission-critical equipment for the schools. The, the, as far as the school facilities are concerned, the first one, Russell Scoreboard Backstop and Netting, the, we thought that the scoreboard was probably superfluous. However, the netting refers to protected netting along the fence along this road. It's not uncommon for soccer balls, baseballs, and those sorts of things to go flying over the fence and cause, cause a hazard.
So...
So, we thought that the price of that would probably be more like five thousand dollars.
So, this goes from eighty-two to five, and that's the elimination?
Eighty-two thousand dollars for the scoreboard.
The scoreboard, okay, all right. So, you'd figure we just could get a little bit more life out of what we have?
Well, that's the, that's the practice field scoreboard.
Yeah.
Okay, yes.
Okay.
But it says here that you're planning to have it funded by...
No, I'm sorry, that's the, that's the center school.
This is, this is number three here?
Right, Russell Scoreboard Backstop Netting.
Yeah, this is...
It says CPA.
No, that's, the next line is center school terrace and balustrade replacement.
Yeah, actually, well, there was the DPW, maybe if I can just interject for a moment.
This is theirs.
Where did that?
DPW did, did submit an application for the scoreboard to the CPC, and we just didn't approve it.
Okay, we're okay. Okay, I see, I'm sorry. Okay.
The next section, town facilities, there was no request for the first four items.
So, actually, could you back up to the school facility?
Sure.
Because it looks like there's a bunch of other items that, it looks like it was requested but not recommended?
I'm sorry, what are you referring to?
So, like, I'm looking at one A, where it says fire suppression updates.
Oh, that's down the road piece, sir. We were just, I was just going down the list as they appear on the sheet.
Okay, because the, I'm looking at school facilities, and there's one A, one B, three, four, four A.
Yes, okay, those are, I'll just... That is, you want me to just jump down to that section?
Well, I...
Because you're skipping over a good deal of our recommendation.
Oh, I...
I don't know what that...
Because I...
Your copy is not the same one I submitted, apparently.
I don't know, I mean...
Alex, the, my copy shows that they're recommending funding number three to five thousand dollars, and number five at eighty-four thousand dollars.
No, I get that, okay, so you and I are looking the same thing, well, I guess I'm getting, so are there things that you didn't recommend?
Right, anything in between that doesn't have a number under the contribution beginning, during the fund, wasn't recommended, I presume.
Right, and that's what I wanted to ask about, is...
May I ask what you're referring to?
Sure, for example, Wolf Swamp playground equipment has no recommended expenditure.
So, this is your recommendation column, so that's your recommendation, that's not there.
This is school?
Yeah.
Okay, my school, see, mine is way down here. That's what happened.
You know, as we consolidated, because it wasn't printing on one page, but this is the initial recommendation, and these are your guys' recommendations.
I'm sorry, this was reformatted by the town, and I did not, I did not appreciate that.
Sorry.
So, anyway, back down to that one then, the...
Fire suppression updates.
Fire suppression, that is a, was a, apparently last winter, there were some problems with the fire suppression in this building, fire suppression system, in that if the temperature dropped below freezing, or some number that's close to it, the fire pipes froze and burst. They dealt with it last year by removing some of the panels in the school on those cold days. The, there was one quote received from, apparently, the people who installed the system, which was a rather shocking amount, and the, as you see, sixty-five thousand dollars apiece for those, that equipment, and with no particular substantiation that we received. And the, our recommendation is to have the town engineer review that, put it out for a new bidding, and see what they could come up with alternatives, because the, what they recommended was wrapping those pipes with rather expensive equipment and without any consideration of alternative methods, so we thought it was, could use some more work.
Now, and maybe this isn't a question for you, maybe it's for Stephen. So, is this like, how imminent a problem is this?
So, he's talking about imminent problem, this year, it was not imminent at all, largely because of the weather. Last year, because we had a significant cold snap that lasted about a month, it was a fairly significant problem. One of the things we, and one of the things we would do is, well, when the building is in what they call unoccupied mode during, like, vacations for Christmas or February in the cold months, they would take ceiling tiles out, and ceiling tiles have some level of fire rating, and they have, like, these, and they'd pop them out, so the heat from the space could get up into the cavity where the sprinkler system is, and that would do the trick, but evidently during the course of one of these breaks, someone decided they didn't like the look of that, and they put the ceiling tiles back, and that prevented the heat from getting up. I will say that Farm Facilities Director Chris Reed did spend a lot of time and energy looking at the different options. The first option, I think, which we all thought was going to be the preferred option, was to do what they call a dry system, so there isn't actually water in the sprinklers.
Okay.
And to even design a dry system, it was north of like twenty thousand dollars or something like that, so that, and then we, so, we, we knew that the system would be potentially a six-figure cost, so we kind of said, is there any other alternative? And so, we did look at other alternatives, and I did, and this is, this is on me, not on the Capital Planning Committee. After they deliberated, I did find, I did get additional information from the Facilities Director that went to them after they had already deliberated, and the price for each school went down significantly, but it was still...
This is the wrapping solution?
The wrap, eh, it's heating the space, it's installing a heater and a thermostat up there to heat the, the space up there.
So, like, up, up above here?
Yeah, yeah, and, and this, if you look at the, if you go, I sent out a, a Google Drive link with all the, the electronic files.
Yeah.
And so, if you look at those, you can see that there are specific, there are plans and everything else, so it gets into some level of detail. It's still not a cheap fix, but it was really, what's the best option we can do in a cost-effective way? And the, I think it was forty-eight thousand or so per school, which includes...
With the little heaters?
With the heaters, but it does include some level of design from a fire suppression specialist engineering company, as well as some construction monitoring with the heaters. We had, we took a look at it, we talked to the, a national expert in fire suppression systems that had been referred to us. Chris engaged him with solutions, or kind of talked to the problem with him, and, you know, he affirmed that there aren't a lot of options to really do, deal with these things, and this was the most cost-effective way, and to be honest with you, I think we were surprised as anybody how expensive it was going to be to seem, to something that looks on its face like a very simple problem, but we certainly did spend a lot of time and energy trying to figure out the best way, and this is what we came up with.
Now, what, has this been a problem in years past? I mean, I...
I think they have had a problem in years past. Again, it's, it's really, it, well, first of all, the additions to the building are relatively new. This is in a newer part of the, the buildings.
Okay.
And so, and I don't know when those came online, but it, within, you know, ten or fifteen years, I don't know when the additions were built. It truly is, it's a bit of a design flaw.
I was going to say, this seems kind of shocking that you're having pipes freeze inside the, the building.
If you look up into the cavity, into the space where, where the pipes are, there is insulation up above that.
Right, right.
But it is on the side of the building, that is, I believe it's the north side of both buildings, doesn't get a lot of natural sunlight, so the space doesn't get any outside, like, sun, like daylighting, if you will, and that's why, you know, they've, they've done the trick of...
Removing the tiles.
When, when the school's in session, it's warm in the school, so it's not as much of a problem, but when they go to, to save energy, when they go to unoccupied mode, so they have the buildings at a lower temperature.
Right.
Sometimes it's like your own attic, even if your house is at sixty-five, the attic goes down to, you know, thirty-five or forty degrees, so that's when we found we had the problems, but it's one of those things where you can't have it be unpredictable. You can't find out too late that you have leaking sprinkler system, they have to get to life safety, so they have to function.
Right.
So, we had, like I said, an engineering firm look at it, and then we decided, heating the space at a minimum amount of temperature necessary to maintain, you know, to prevent water freezing was the way to go.
So, at this point, the best solution we've got is forty-eight thousand dollars per school?
Yeah, that's, that's all in with engineering and construction management, stuff like that, and that's something that was not in the original estimate because I didn't, I didn't get them the information before they made the decision.
So, is this something we could muddle through with the, with the tiles?
I don't think long-term, no, I think long-term it calls for a reasonable solution.
No, I get that, but I mean, that's what, I mean, it's not on this, so, I mean, you know, I mean, that's, we're at the decision point, right? I mean...
Well, part of the thing was, and this is in administrative matter.
Yeah.
Part of the issue was, as, as you, as the board knows, we had turnover at the department, especially with our engineer, our town engineer position, kind of in the midst of all of this planning.
Yeah.
So, I will confess that some of the information, some of the questions that were raised, justifiably so, by the Capital Planning Committee, we weren't in all that great a position to answer. I, I do trust the information we put together was based on the best information that the people working on it could generate, and they, as Dr. Metz noted, we do have funds in our budget that we use to get engineering estimates and have people besides just our own in-house staff
Right.
to take a look at these things, to get experts to help us through these more complex problems. But the Capital Planning Committee recommended that our town engineer, who is a civil engineer, also take a look at it, and, you know, and he has done that, but he started at the end of February, so it's, this has all been kind of moving out, you know, beyond the time that he's had to look at it.
So, it sounds like on this particular point, we've got, the decision is whether to spend forty-eight thousand dollars per school or try to muddle along for a year and then revisit it next year? Am I reading that part right?
Oh, you could go up for three estimates now, too, that's what's lacking, there's only one estimate.
Right.
And it is a shocking price even for any kind of system, it's...
Where's the forty-eight thousand?
He just...
It's not in there.
Oh, right, okay.
It's on the document, Mark, that was in that larger drive, and part of that was, part of that was turnover. On this one, I will say, I feel like we got a lot of information on it. If there's another answer out there...
Yeah, tracing tape and insulation, add that to the list and have somebody estimate what that's going to cost, because for forty-eight thousand dollars, you can, tracing tape and insulate with a thermostat, about a thousand miles of piping. Seriously, I, I don't know if they've looked at it, because I...
They did.
Tracing tape, and they didn't like it, huh?
I, I don't think there was, there's a reliability issue with tracing tape.
All right.
I think, my understanding is that the tracing tape, or heat tape, as sometimes they call it,
Yeah.
has a, has a pretty high failure rate, and, and that's, that's the thing. If this was, you know, a different kind of building, I, I think maybe we'd look at, what's the cheapest solution we can go through to get to there, but it's an elementary school, they're both, they're both elementary schools. I think we said, you know, we wanted to have the most cost-effective but reliable solution we could possibly get. I mean, I, I think it's fine, I should say, I think it's fine. I think it's a perfectly reasonable suggestion to say, let's wait till next year. We have a brand-new facilities director now as well, let's let them apply, let him apply his expertise to it, that's fine. Like I said, we, we've managed for many years by doing the ceiling tiles and kind of doing that thing, but when it happened the first time, I think there was a lot of focus on this issue, it was something that was a high priority for the town, and that's why we carried it forward. If the consensus is, let's take another look at it in a different way, I'm fine with that, I don't know, but if next year we come to the same conclusion, let's make sure we don't, you know, fall back in the same trap.
Speaking for ours, if we get consensus of several evaluators and three bids, as you say, Mr. Foster, we will feel much more comfortable with this.
Can I say something about the bidding, though? Because this is a procedural thing. You're only going to find one estimate for any of these. The bidding process only occurs once we have the funding in place. The town generally does not bid out work for which we do not have an appropriation, and the appropriation doesn't happen until after the capital plan is done and town meeting has approved it, so we have gone and gotten second opinions and things like that, but in terms of going out and doing a full-fledged procurement process, which is, we know, as Dr. Metz mentioned, we have sometimes come up short with some of our financial planning, these projects, you know, the estimate's the estimate, the bid is the bid, and we don't, and this is kind of a, I don't say a flaw in the process, but a, one of the complexities of doing the procurement in the Commonwealth is you don't do the, you can't do the bidding until you have the appropriation, so that's why we do spend the extra money with the engineers upfront. But, like I said, I, I think, you know, I'd prefer not to wait on it, but I, I do think it's a reason, it is a complex matter, and it is expensive.
Please go on.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Okay. The, I think, that was, oh, the playground equipment. The, they, we ranked ours low. I went up and looked at the equipments available myself. A lot of this has to do with the reallocation of students among the schools, and the equipment that is currently existing is in the wrong school, it's not in bad shape, it's just in the wrong school.
Okay, so are we looking at number four now, for Wolf Swamp?
Four A, four and four A?
Four and four A?
Yes, yes. The, one of the schools is not going to have, I guess, preschool anymore, is that true? Yes. And it now has good playground equipment that's suitable for that age. Apparently, playground equipment comes age-specific.
Right.
And the equipment that's now at center school is in good shape. Center school, I think, is, is where they pre-... Yes, and they want to move it to Wolf Swamp.
Which ones, what do you want to move?
There is currently age-appropriate playground equipment at center school for pre-K.
Okay.
For pre-K.
So, during the registering process, preschool is moved from center to Wolf Swamp.
Right.
The playground equipment for that age group stayed at center.
Right, right.
Okay, so it's...
So, they're asking for new equipment for Wolf Swamp.
So, but the equipment currently at center school will not be used, so...
Well, I mean, it'll be used.
I know, but I, it was our thought, given the budget constraints, I mean, if, if we only have, as I say, our, our allocation was reduced by six thousand, hundred thousand dollars, given that, that would have been one of our lower priorities. Because the equipment currently exists, it's in very good shape, and the, it is not going to be used during the school hours by preschool.
Okay, so that's four A, what about four? What's that one? Because the four A says it's preschool.
The, it had to do, again, with buying new equipment for larger, for older children.
Okay.
Currently at Wolf Swamp, but...
Yeah, it was, and that's the, the, applications I received, sorry.
No problem.
So, because this was one that kind of happened before it got to them. Schools submitted for an application for both new, for all new playground equipment for Wolf Swamp.
Okay.
And then they decided that the existing playground equipment was suitable, and then submitted a supplemental application, which would have been four A, for just the preschool playground equipment.
So, you're saying on number four, Wolf Swamp School withdrew their application for the...
It was really supplemental, but withdraw, so, yeah.
So, like, so they don't want to, so they don't want to replace the older kids' equipment?
I mean, I think initially they did.
Right, right.
But they just submitted a supplemental. I mean, we called it a supplemental, you could call it a replacement, six one, half dozen the other. And at the time... Um, and at the time, you know, I didn't, it, 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 this was the first year on the plan and, and it was not conveyed to me, or if it was, I didn't. If it didn't connect to me, that was a high priority for the schools either.
Examination of equipment at Wolf Swamp, I don't see anything wrong with it, it's reasonably new.
The preschool kids, and this is something, this is a generational thing, I mean, I think all of us here played on the same, you know, slide and tilt-a-whirl or whatever that everybody else played on. But now, apparently, there's preschool equipment and other kids' equipment, and you need to have some monitoring preschool kids playing on the older kids' equipment.
Right.
That was news to me, so that was kind of on me, but that is a situation that preschool kids do play on the existing playground equipment, it is in good shape, as, as he alluded to. It's just one thing where they have to have somebody out there kind of monitoring it. And the new, let me see, the new equipment at center school is the elementary school equipment. The preschool equipment, I do think, is in good shape, but it is, it's not the stuff that got replaced three years ago at town meetings, different.
So, so.
There's, 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 there's elementary school equipment in both schools.
Right.
They both appear to be in very good condition.
Okay.
There is also a pre-K set of equipment at center school.
Okay.
That, uh, we recommended rather than adding, adding more preschool equipment at Wolf Swamp to just move it over.
And is, was that the town manager's, was that your recommendation?
I did not recommend the, the program for funding this year.
Period.
Period. It was not one of the, in the ranking of priorities, it was not, it did not make the cut on my recommendation.
So Wolf Swamp would be left with having their pre-K kids playing on the regular equipment.
Yeah, and, and truthfully, that was, like I said, a reflection of what I thought I had understood the school committee's priorities to be.
Yeah, that's not quite, Mr. Grant, there, there currently is pre-K equipment at center school.
Oh, I understand it.
They will not, they will not be using it because there's no pre-Ks children there. So it's, uh, if you're gonna, it would be much less expensive just to move the equipment to where the children are.
Okay, um, next.
The, uh, the life, uh, the, um, equipment that's gonna be funded by the community preservation. Mr. Weis.
Which one is that?
Uh, the balustrade. Going back to where I started from, the, uh, other major, uh, change we made was, uh, our recommendation we made was to pavement preservation. Again, uh.
Uh, could you stay with the school, cuz I think there's five, six, and seven there?
Okay, the, um.
Esplanade storage.
Oh, yes, that has to do with a, uh, room here in the high school. The, apparently, uh, the initial, uh, plan did not allow for, um, uh, ventilation of that space. That, uh, really, at the present has no, uh, no, um, is not being used for lack of ventilation and other, uh.
This is in this school?
Yes.
It, it's not in the school. Uh, this is something, I think we talked about this at the board level. Um, when we, the issue came up about the shed at the football field. Did we talk, I thought we talked about it at the select board level. The boosters wanted to donate a shed and we had some conversation.
This is different.
It, it's, the reason why it became, it got on the list and, and turned into a fuller sized project was i- it, for these, for the select board's, um. Uh, memory, I thought, I thought we had, did last summer, we did a conversation about a shed that, that the football boosters wanted to donate, but. The, the, the original issue was, there was not a, a storage space to store the, the seasonal athletic equipment. So it's for track and spraying hurdles, things like that, and then for football, it's the, you know, the tackling pads and things like that. There are storage containers n- near the sta- uh, uh, stands that during the season, they store things there. And they're in and out by the field and by the track because they're close by, but then when it's off, the off-season stuff is stored, and then right now, in a. A rotting corrugated steel container as well, right there by the stadium. So there was some discussion about donating a shed and putting it next to the football field. This issue had come up sometime before because they had stored some football equipment there, um, that had gotten moldy, had to be thrown out, and it was. If you look at the back of the school from William Street, there's, they call it the esplanade, is really kind of an area outside the library, high school library windows. There's a railing there, um, it's the curved part of the building. Underneath, there's a, a space with an overhead door that was kind of an add-on space, kind of late in the design. I wasn't here for any of this, this is all kind of. You know, third, third hand, but they found, they've kind of found this space and they said, well, I'm gonna put a door and some electrical in there and they use for storage. They didn't count on the level of moisture that was going to be there, and so this project had been talked about even during, I don't know, Mark, you're a school billing committee, but we had talked about it then as well. What do we do to fix this? It was supposed to be a DPW facility shop, that didn't happen either. So then, when the, we were discussing the shed, I said, well, wouldn't fixing this space, which needs to be done anyway. Solve that problem, there was agreement from the athletic director and the school committee that, that would help solve these, these, the sto- the long-term storage of the athletic equipment. Went, and this is another one, went out, got the estimate, talked to some other folks, tried to get some second opinions, and it just is, for me, a bit of a sticker shock number. But it is a large space and it is very damp, but to really s- long-term solve that space. And long-term solve the needs of the athletic department and their storage needs, kind of with one sensible project, um, this was it. So the, and this was one of the things that was highly ranked by the school committee as one of their priorities.
Looking at these two lists, I, I think part of the problem is that, uh, our categorization, organization has been. Rather significantly changed. Uh, we had put in what we thought were the more pri- higher priority and then listed lower priority issues. By, uh, by cost to show what a running balance would be, where they included, and that sort of got lost in the shuffle on this one. We had actually recommended that at a lower priority, um.
The esplan- the esplanade storage at a lower priority?
Yes, uh, because of the higher priorities of other things. So the, the lower priorities in, in order, I'll just read them to you. Um, there's a present, there's, we recommended that the bulk of the pavement preservation be funded both, either by chapter ninety funds. Or by capital funds. But because of the constraints of the budget, we recommended that two hundred thousand dollars of that be left off pending approval of, uh, higher capital budget. The, uh, the next one.
Thousand dollars, documents of, of just the pavement preservation?
Yes.
I'm sorry, where are you?
Well, as I say, your, your, uh, a lot of what we'd recommended, uh, has been lost in the turn, in the conversion of the format.
It's just been lost in the conversion of the sheet, you mean?
Yes.
Well, okay, all right, so.
So the, um, the original request for pres- pavement preservation was for four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That would be funded out of chapter ninety and seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which was, uh, be funded out of, um, the capital budget. We recommended that the total price be dropped from, uh, twelve, was it twelve thousand dollars, twelve hun- one point two million dollars. To, um, one million dollars.
Hey, you know, I'm getting a little. Do you mind if we just keep going through?
You go to page two under section five, okay? The middle column, we lost the headings, but it says pavement preservation, seven fifty, and then to the right, it says six fifty.
Yeah.
With Dr. Metz is saying that, that seven fifty plus the four fifty under it, which is the chapter, chapter ninety money.
Right.
A total of one point two million dollars. What they're saying is funding a million dollars has high priority and the additional two hundred thousand has lower priority. Am I reading that correctly?
It, it would be the next thing that we would, if, if the money were available, that'd be the next thing that we would recommend.
Do, do you mind if we just keep going to, cuz this has been very helpful, just kind of taking one at a time. Cuz the next thing I have on my list is replace playground equipment at.
Well, we've discussed that already.
No, at Blueberry Hill.
Do you wanna go through the ones they aren't recommending as well as the ones they are?
I do, yeah.
Well, this is a, this is a five-year plan, right?
No.
There's this one-year plan, and the, the five-year plan is, is provided so that you can see where this will lead to over the five years. This will be year one of that five-year plan.
So.
Be one year, year one of the five-year plan.
Yes, sir.
And so, so you wanna go over everything that's gonna be recommended for five years?
No, no, not, no, no, this year.
But they're all recommend, but not all recommended.
This all one year. They're all, they, cuz we don't have enough money.
But I wanna know what, I mean, this was part of the town manager's recommendation, I, I wanna see their thinking. I literally just have.
We'll continue.
Three, that's what, that's what I asked.
Please continue.
Okay, I'm trying, I'm trying to determine what you're looking at according to what our recommendation was.
So it was, this, I have, is under school facilities, Blueberry Hill, number six, replace playground equipment eighty thousand.
The, um.
Cuz it looks like beside your thing, there's nothing.
The school department put in for replacing playground equipment at all three schools.
Yep.
If an evaluation of that equipment shows it is in reasonable shape. And it would seem to me that if we have so many, and our committee, I shouldn't say me, but our committee, that if we have a lot of priorities and not much money. That that would be one of the things could be put down lower in the, in the list.
Okay, so your evaluation, the condition was good enough at this point?
That it certainly could last another year.
Okay, and now, and just parenthetically, when you guys sort of looked at the playground, did, did anybody actually go eyeball it?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so the next one is terrace and balustrade, is that what?
The community preservation folks, that, that's their.
That's part of, you, all right, so you'll talk about that one, okay. All right, and then the next thing on my list is the library window replacement and service ramp and stair replacement?
Yes, the library windows have resurfaced almost every year since I've been on the committee. The, um, again, a, a very low priority, it, it, most of it has to do with the fact that they don't close the windows of our space. They're also, they're also poor, you know, they're, they basically, uh, were put in at the time when double-pane windows and all the. Uh, low, low E, uh, equipment was not in vogue. And certainly they could, they're old-fashioned, it could be replaced, uh, but the, uh, again, we're looking at where the priorities are. So if. This couldn't shut off all the time.
I wish, I could just interrupt a second.
Yes, sir.
Was, was the reading on the windows that, that they, there wasn't significant enough energy savings to be achieved, it's mostly windows are tough to open and close and. That kind of stuff, or is it truly a potential energy savings that?
It's potentially energy savings, I'm not sure how much that.
I, I, and truthfully, it's, it's somewhat sadly, it's the windows on the newer portion of the library that was added on. Uh, the windows that were installed were not of a high quality.
Right.
So the original windows with the storm windows aren't part of the replacements, it's the windows on the newer part of the building that have just.
Right, well, we already replaced the windows in center school, which was about the same era as this, so I'm not surprised at all.
No, but different era, I mean, not era windows, the windows that were good-looking are placed from the nineties.
And that's when we redid sen- the center school rebuild windows have already been replaced, it's the same era, that's what I'm saying.
So, so I think that that's the, I think it will be an energy savings. Um, some of the older windows, um, you know, they're older, they're heavy and they're wooden, uh, they need maintenance and repairs. And we've taken a, a different approach to doing that. Um, but these are just the vinyl windows, I think, in the back of the building.
I, I just encourage, you know, I mean, we're formed, just formed an energy committee, they have all this stuff to do with, you know, we spent. Can't tell you how many literally millions of dollars we spent in this town replacing windows for energy savings. I would encourage if next year, take a look at this for nothing more than energy savings. Potentially is worth making that, uh, making that recommendation, but I appreciate your, your recommendation at this point.
Uh, the service ramp is in the back of this building, uh, it is, uh, again, we've taken a look at it. And, uh, it is not in good condition, but it is not used very often except for moving books and that sort of thing, it's not the primary interest to the hot, to the library.
So that's one, that's sort of on the side of it, like, what, the north side of the building?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Okay, I think I know what you're talking about. So you figured that's just something we can postpone for a little while?
Yes.
Okay.
The next thing down your list is the DPW gate. The, um, the gate is, there's two problems with it, one is, is old and rather fussy. The second thing is, is that, this is a gate that closes a road between that, that, the road and the, uh, the gas pumps.
I'm well aware of that gate.
Okay. The, uh, uh, it's apparently hard to open and close, but also one of the major issues is that. People who go down to lose, use the gas pumps frequently fail to close the gate.
Right.
And, uh, because, again, it's something that we thought would be of a lower priority in the overall scheme of things.
And, uh, what, what would be the fix to this? I mean, the.
They have to get a new gate.
No, I get that, but I mean, is there a different type of gate, I mean, what's?
Motorized gate with, uh, sensors, like openers. I, I mean, I guess I would, I would disagree with Dr. Metz on what the major issue is. The major issue is the gate doesn't function very well. There are times where, where, may, especially, um, when the DPW personnel leave the facility, when the gate is working. Last person out usually closes it, but there are times overnight where, whether it's the ambulance or a fire truck or a police, uh, police patrol vehicle. May get down there and fill up and may forget to close it. But right now, the gate really is very difficult to move and, um, I truthfully have, um, you know, workplace injury issues. With people trying to wrestle with the gate. I've, I've tried myself to get on there, cuz I said, gone down there Saturday, seen it open and said. The gate's open Saturday and I thought I was gonna give myself a hernia trying to close the thing. Um, so we said, all right, well, let's try and see if we can so- solve the short-term problem. While we are obviously engaged in a broader effort on the long-term issues with the DPW. And maybe we get a piece of equipment that can be moved to a potentially new site, let's try it. Um, I have maintained many times that, um, because the pumps have to be accessed frequently, the gate does need to be opened or closed. Or if it's not functioning, it's remained open, our risk of loss in that section of the yard, uh, is low. Because a lot of the equipment that's stored there is either out of service or belongs to Northern Tree. Uh, who stores equipment there as part of our arrangement. Um, but I looked at this as, we got a estimate on a motorized gate, and I thought, well, if we have the sufficient funds, maybe let's. You know, do the short-term fix and, you know, you hopefully redeploy whatever equipment we get at a potentially new.
Yeah, when I, when we finish here, I would hope that, to, uh, to go through our list of secondary priority, uh, projects. With the running totals, so you know how much we're talking about.
Sure, so, uh, on this one though, I mean, the motorized gate is one thing, but I mean. You know, what about oiling it and, and making it less old and fuss, I mean, it seems like there's gotta be a, a, a cheaper solution to that. Have we looked at that?
Yes, and it's really the, the fence all the way around the thing, that the gate sit, that the, I mean, it's all wheels, it's casters that the gate rolls on. You've, you've looked at it up close.
Yeah.
It, it's all bent and, you know, many, many years old, and at some point in time, you can oil it and things that were gonna, it's gonna be a recurring problem. And so we thought, all right, how much to just fix it right?
Well, I guess, so I'm kind of thinking a motorized solu- like, you, you've kind of bought yourself another problem, like you've got something that's expensive to maintain. Whereas if you've, you know, you get something, you know, sort of like a garage door, you know, like the simpler thing is not to have the motorized thing, it just, but. You're right, I mean, you gotta be able to move it.
But if the goal is to keep the gate closed, the motorized solution is the better option.
Could I make a recommendation that we move on a little bit? We're getting hung up on some pretty small details about our program, but we're.
Well.
We've got a lot of information to cover, we've already been at this forty or fifty minutes.
You know, you, you know, this DPW gate, we, we've been discussing this for three years. And, and we're finally, and, and I'm thinking, my goodness, we're, we're almost at a solution, you know?
We can spend twenty-six thousand and fix it.
So, all right.
Or grease it. Or go down and grease it.
Well, that's what I was asking about. All right, so we can move on.
Okay. Uh, the Greenwood Full Influence, again, the Community Preservation Committee has evaluated this and. Um, defer to them. Oh, here's the rest of it. The, uh, your second page is actually our first page. So, uh, this, this page here.
Okay, where it says it's equipment and then fire slash EMS?
Yes.
Okay.
The, um. The, um. We had recommended that the, uh, annual contribution of fire, uh, equipment, fire truck, um, should be increased to a hundred, a hundred fifty thousand dollars. However, uh, because of the expenditure last year, we recommend it be deferred this year.
So it would just be a hundred this year?
Well, it was gonna be, again, lower priority because of the fact that there are much higher priority items on the budget they were.
Sure, sure.
The, uh, leasing is not within our purview.
Actually, could, the next one was replacement of engine two, and then there was a request of six hundred thousand?
The, uh, the, um, town manager advised us that this would be bonded, so this would not come out of capital budget.
I think the timing of it is such that, because the, the need is gonna be within the next year or so, the truck fund will not have built up a balance sufficient to pay for it. So I don't know if, I don't know, it's not my decision to make to be bonded, but we would maybe make a, a recommendation for borrowing as a part of a larger, if we did a larger bond for projects, but that's essentially it.
Well, what if, what if we just didn't do the hundred thou- I mean, if we're gonna bond it anyway, right, I mean, not do the?
Well, we recommended that the hundred thousand not be allocated this year, we recommend deferring it.
Oh, so have, to have zero?
Yes.
Oh, okay, yeah.
The stuff was done, it's carried on.
It is carried on here.
Oh, it is, I'm sorry.
And, and Alex, it's that much less you bond, I mean, you know, bonding has a cost to the town, it's not free, and if you bond less than a hundred thou- a hundred thousand dollars less.
Right. Right.
Bond a hundred thousand dollars less.
Didn't we figure we were replacing the truck every seven year?
That was like what I thought the theory was.
But we're off of that because we just replaced the twenty-five.
We shouldn't be off of it, it means that somebody held up procuring a truck, is what happened, it wasn't anything we did, it was something that was done.
I, I'm not trying to cast blame, but, 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 we, the town are off of that.
No, but I mean, that's what happened, they got it out of sight. Right.
Yeah.
But we, the town, had created a problem.
Right, so, cause, cause we have two twenty-five year pieces of equipment that needed to be replaced at about the same time.
Right.
Yeah.
And they weren't that way originally, we allowed that to get that way, or just for the, the behavior of the town allowed it to get that way.
Right, right, so, I mean, like, what's the next one, let's say we do ba- bond out engine two, I mean, do we have anything on the horizon, I mean, it seems like we'd be in good shape at that point, yeah?
Uh, yes, maybe an ambulance, because the ambulance has logged a lot of miles, but the ambulance, we have an ambulance fund.
Right.
But you would maybe, you would maybe need partially, you would maybe need partial capital funding because the ambulance fund wouldn't, I mean, the ambulance is our hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
And believe it or not, we were told that that ambulance would last twelve years.
And it may, but it's, we've had it for.
Two.
Two years, I think it's here when I got here.
Yeah, but you're gonna replace the backup one.
Yeah.
Yeah, when that, when that one goes into backup.
Yeah.
Right, but, but the new one is.
Well, then don't say, then don't say it'll last fifteen years.
I didn't say that he said.
You can't stay in backup status for thirteen years.
No.
And smoke and mirrors?
He just said, he just said, I didn't say we're buying it next year, he just said, what's, what's next on the horizon, I speculated it would probably be an ambulance. I didn't say when, I just said next.
Glad the cameras aren't going.
The, um. Next ones down are pretty much as you, you see them, the assistant director's vehicle, uh, the, um, DPW.
Sorry, I think the next one on ours is snow slash ice truck leasing?
Yes, leasing is not within our purview.
Okay, and then the next, working foreman's utility body?
The, uh, again, the DPW rec- advised this can be deferred, uh, if necessary, but we left it in, so you might wanna swap that out for the gate.
So the.
If you go to the sheets that were in the Google Drive.
Yeah.
The word documents, they have the vehicle, the description who uses it.
Right.
Mileage of the vehicle that's being replaced, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay, but the way it looks like now, the recom- your recommendation is twenty-one thousand, but replacing the vehicle would be forty-two?
The, uh, that comes, the other half comes out of one of the enterprise funds.
Gotcha.
Both the enterprise funds, but, yeah.
Gotcha, okay.
Okay, the only other change in that, um, in that list was that, um, the assistant director's vehicle, uh, which the DPW chairman or, uh, directors advises they can defer.
What is a utility work machine? Is that a vehicle driver, is that a truck?
No, it is, um, let me get the sheet, now you gotta look at the sheet, but it's basically, we have a machine called a holder. It's a German piece of equipment, does a lot of our sidewalk plowing, I don't know if you've ever seen it, um, but it's, it's like a German luxury car, it's pretty temperamental, hard to get parts for. And so, um, they, uh, wanna buy a machine that is basically a machine that you could put on, almost like a Bobcat, uh, you could do a mower, you could do a brush, you know, a street, a street cleaning brush, different attachments.
So this is, this is the body of a, of a multi-purpose vehicle?
Correct, let me, uh, see if I can find it here and, and give you a better description.
My, my recollection is we bought one of those not too long ago, during, during my tenure, and it's not been that long.
Hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, I think it was a hundred thousand dollars on.
Hundred thousand dollars.
I think it was. That's what we, my, M, and, and a rack body M three is a, is a truck?
Sounds like a truck.
Sounds like a truck.
Yes, rack body is a truck.
What is it?
I mean, a rack body is a, uh, it may have a dump body on it, but it's basically the, it's like a flatbed with, um, almost looks like, uh, fencing around it, it carries, it uses to transport cones or barrels, things like that.
Where is the, it, then it's a stakebody?
Um, I'm still looking at the ground, so you guys are jumping ahead of me.
Oh, okay.
Um, yeah, so, I was right, the, the utility work machine is a Bobcat product and it's, um, and basically this would be, we asked, we had talked about replacing one of the grounds mowers, that was kind of at the end of its life last year, we didn't end up doing it, but this utility work machine would be able to replace that grounds mower, plus do a lot of other things.
Okay, so, we're. So that's sixty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And it's gonna mow grass?
Amongst other things, I guess, there's different.
Like, what else does it do?
It's not a big change.
So, it would also, um, the tool, um, the tool cat is a reversal year-round machine capable of repelling various configurations of mowers during the summer, while maintaining its capacity to load small trucks, like with a, a bucket. Like a Bobcat, like a Tristral Bobcat, or skid, they can, skid steers would work, um, plow snow during the winter, carry materials in a spreader, um, on a rear three-point hitch. Uh, the, the tool cat with a snow blower attachment is capable of cutting back roadside snowbanks and load trucks for disposal of snow, so it can do cut grass, load and, um, plow or, or have a snow blower attachment.
Okay.
Dr. Metz, as you went through this DPW equipment, did you recommend that these, the, the, the capital planning committee recommend, uh, appropriation for all these equipments as they are?
Yes, except for the, uh, the assistant director truck, uh, car.
Okay, which, which here shows zero, and, and I guess, it, having gone through these, comparing them to both our vehicle replacement schedule, that was that, you know, that done, or our, or our long-term vehicle study, that was all?
Yes, yes, yes.
Review, okay.
And were you able, like, we were just trying to figure out what a utility work machine, I mean, were you guys able to?
Yes.
Go through all of that, figure out what they were, okay.
I mean, I can understand asphalt reclaimer hot box and vibratory roller, I assume we don't have those and those are new equipment that would help us take care of streets and roads?
Yes, the hot box we don't have, the vibratory roller, we have one, uh, but it is much, very small and does not, it's not good enough really to pack the, uh, the coal pack, patches down, it's lifting out very quickly. They used, uh, we borrowed one to, um, do the, the road down in Ponside, and you can take a trip down there and see it does a very good job. Again, we put that at a lower priority though, because we do have one, they can borrow one, um, upon occasion as they need it. So it is on the lower priority list, uh, if there's enough funding for it.
Yeah, and what's a ten-wheel hook lift, that's also a, I assume, a truck?
Uh huh.
Yes. It's a, one of those, uh, big trucks, uh, that it also has the ability to lift other equipment, to transport it.
Did, I assume these are replacing existing trucks?
Um, except for the, um, which one was it? The, the assistant director vehicle would have been a replacement too, so the asphalt reclaimers not.
Right, that, that's equipment, but, I mean, the truck, the vehicles are replacement.
Yes, the, the vehicles.
We don't have a hook lift, but one was recommended in that Mercury report.
But it's gotta be replacing something. The Mercury report had direct replacements for everything.
I thought it was replacing one of the older, uh, trucks of the same size, that's the information we received.
It could be, but it, it's, but the hook lift attachment configuration is different, where they may be replacing.
I think it's replacing, it's replacing an older truck that doesn't have that piece of equipment on it.
Right.
So, so coming back to your thing about the vibratory roller, so you are recommending the twenty-five thousand, but you're saying that might be something that was deferable?
Yes, cause we have, we have equipment, uh, that is, um, will, um, do a reasonable job and not a good one.
Okay, but you, okay, so, so you're saying you recommend it, but that could go on the chopping block?
Yes.
Okay.
So the hook lift would replace a ten-wheel dump truck with all-season body and four-way snowplow. Similarly, the rack body, the rack bed body is really, it's, instead of having the all-season body, which is, I, I infer, I mean, a dump truck body, like a dump body, the rack body would be used to, a flat, a, a flatbed, that you can put the, the spreader right on and avoid the damaging of the salt and everything spilling into the dump body, and then the same thing with the hook lift.
They had a, uh, the, the report said it was gonna replace a, uh, two thousand two truck, a five to seven yard dump. Is that what you just said, or?
Yes, the, uh, that's the H twenty-three truck.
Steven, is that what you just said?
What's that? Which, which one are you talking about?
The hook, you said the hook lift was replacing what?
A, a ten-wheeled, uh, ten-wheel dump with, uh, all-season body and four-way snowplow.
Okay, so that's not, that's not what the, the Mercury report showed then. Mercury report showed it was gonna be replacing a five to seven cubic car, there was a ten wheeler down in here, but it was, uh, it wasn't replaced by that.
I mean.
Details.
Yeah, I mean, one of the things I'm noticing that DP, so some of these items that we're just talking about are fairly low on DPW's priority, and it's actually higher than the fire suppression, um. I don't know, would, did, where did you come out on that?
Well, these are different, uh, agencies that are recommending these things.
Right.
And, uh, the snow, snow replacement and roads seem to be pretty high priority in this district.
Right, well, I mean, I guess why, what I'm, I, I'm assuming that DPW is probably pretty good at recommending stuff that's gonna benefit it, you know, like, it's gonna be very cognizant of it. So the fact that they're recommending the fire suppression over some of its own equipment.
No, we're, that was the capital planning commission, uh, committee's recommendation. Okay, the, the DPW and the DPW and the school department are, made their list with their priorities.
Right.
And we had to determine, uh, which seemed to be, for the town, the, the greater priority.
The list that they got was the town managers recommended capital plan.
Right, right.
So I took all the input from DPW schools or DPW facilities.
Right, right. That's what you're.
Fire, police, everything.
That's what you're showing here, does it?
No, that, the appendix A, or appendix B is their take on my recommendation, right, so, yeah.
I understand that. So, the, I guess my point is that DPW ranked what was most important to it, and so we're funding something that was number nineteen by DPW, but not ranked as number four by DPW. And, you know, DPW is obviously very aware of the needs for its own equipment, so the fact that you have something ranked above it seems like, if they were of the opinion that was pretty important, you, you get the logic of what I'm saying?
I don't know.
So, I mean, that's appendix A, cause DPW was ranked, I mean, uh, DPW ranked the fire suppression updates as number four. So, and, and I understand you have a different view of it and, and, uh, and, uh, could you?
A major, a major reason for ranking it to fire suppression was because it, we didn't think it had embedded sufficiently.
Okay, right, okay.
Once, once it's been done, it was certainly.
Sure, sure, okay.
Um, the rest of it, I think, is, um, is already discussed, so, are there any specific questions you have about it, and I'd be happy to answer.
Dr. Metz, two, a, a couple of questions, I, I just wanna go back and get, cause it, it didn't come through this way, the, the total here is one million, two hundred twenty-two thousand fifteen.
Where are you?
Uh, uh, that's total of appendix B and what he recommended and that's what?
No, our total, uh.
Is one million, six twenty-nine, five oh three?
No, our, our total is one, five, two, eight, three ninety.
Okay, so that's not a number I've got in.
Yeah, I'm, what I'm gonna need to do is.
Well.
Print this and send it to you, because this is very garbled.
Okay, so, right, what I, what I'd like to do is, if I could, if you're gonna do that, ask that you list in priority, because I'm not sure, I mean, you've got a number, the town manager's got a number, we've changed capital two or three times, and very honestly, capital appears to be one of the items that had, that, that we might be able to adjust in this overall town budget. And so my question or request would be to just list from number one priority to the very last priority in priority order from the capital planning committee, so that, you know, we can go down and say, here's where we thought the money was, but if we have a little bit more, we have a little bit less, we understand what your recommendations would be to add or to remove from the pro- the list.
The, um, part of the trouble we're running into is that this was reformatted today, I did not see the reformatting, there is a priority listed in my, uh, version that you guys do not see. And, uh.
Well, then just if you just send it to us, that'd be great.
Okay.
Thank you, I, no, I, I apologize.
We didn't reformat Steve, we, we shrank it down and fit it on one page.
This has got nothing, my, with all due respect.
That's the appendix B that would, that you said.
This is the appendix B that I sent.
It, it should be the same document, other than just compressed, uh, compressed to be.
It's not, it is not, it is not.
Fit on one page, we didn't alter the document at all.
Cause I, yeah, I don't.
I will send you, I will send you my version.
Thank you.
Yeah, cause I don't see that number, one, what'd you say, one point five?
It is on my version.
Okay, alright.
So, yeah, I mean, that, that'll allow us to, allow me to potentially make more intelligent choices, if it, if we have to cut capital, we'll see what we're, what we're potentially cutting by, by reducing it, or if we have to add capital, what we're potentially getting in. And I would ask that, if possible, you take things that are like, and I, I think we've done that before, like pavement preservation that, where you have a large number, and if you wanna put it into like five fifty and then the other two hundred thousand later, that'd be great also.
That's the way originally submitted.
Okay, great.
I do not know how it'll wind up in this format, I did not do that.
Remember, I talked to you too, Steve, well, I brought it up on my computer, uh, I couldn't make heads or tails of it, it came up like individual sheets.
The, I think the problem that you have, Mr. Foster, is that you have an edition of the spreadsheet that's much older than mine.
What was the one that you just sent out? It's, it's the latest one that, that I got.
I'll send you the edition I have.
Okay, yeah, cause remember I talked to you today, it came up as individual sheets and they, it was like, there, there was a spreadsheet, but it had been split by different pages.
I don't know why it came up that way.
Yeah.
Did, I printed it out for me.
Wow.
And this is, this is what it looks like, all one page in order.
No, no, the other one was split.
Perhaps the next time, if you have trouble opening it, you might give me a little bit of advance notice, so I can provide you a copy that you can read.
Yeah, I don't know till I go to open it, I was gonna have trouble.
I know.
Yeah.
So, the town government is foundering on Excel right now.
I'm, I'm looking at last year's, um, projections for two thousand seventeen, and one of the things on there is the, um, you know, at Ronald's Pool, they talk about having ADA, you know, upgrades, so that's, uh, so folks with disabilities would have access, I, I understand, right? Is that, and it doesn't seem like that, did that make the budget this year?
It's not on, it's not this year.
Not in progress.
Cause on, on this sheet that we had gotten, this was, uh, it had a, a listing, um, it had a, it was our, we got that very large document.
That was the last year's one, right?
And it was last year's.
Right.
But it, it talked about projections for fiscal year seventeen, um, eighteen, nineteen, you know, to, up to twenty thousand, it was a five-year thing, and so ADA, um, improvements were on there, and then, so, I guess I'm just wondering how did something like that get lost in the shuffle, if it was on a, a five-year plan last year?
Well, they didn't get lost with capital, the capital never received it.
We can, we can only work.
I can't, I can't help, but that's last year's sheet, they never received what you're talking about.
Well, this was, who put this, this is. Well, this was, who put this, this is from the town manager?
I know, but they didn't get, they weren't looking, and even if they had a five-year plan, they'd only be grading a single-year plan. So whatever they graded out is what they got on this one-year plan for consideration by their community.
I see, alright.
And the other ones are stacked out there, Tom, but they never got that for this year's consideration.
Cause they're working off the town manager's recommendations.
Right, they would not have dropped anything off town manager's recommendation, they would have said, we don't agree with it, and we're not, we don't want to fund it, but they wouldn't have dropped anything or added anything.
So, when they put together a five-year plan, then, next year.
We don't.
Town manager does.
You don't, the town manager.
Town manager does.
So last year, we, we put together a town year, a five-year plan.
Right.
But then, the things on there, some of the things from last year are being addressed, like the windows and so forth, but these ADA, there's a couple of different.
Right, well, that, that question would be addressed to the town manager.
The town manager, so I guess.
On why it didn't go on this year's program.
Sorry, what was the question?
Well, it's like the, it says that Reynolds Pool, there was a ADA upgrades that were supposed to be done in 2017 budget on this sheet that you gave us, and what happened, are those going to be done, were they already done, or?
2018, they're on the five-year plan, so 2018.
Oh, for eighteen?
Yeah, they're on the five-year.
Okay, cause I'm looking at this, I thought for sure it was on 2017, but it was moved to 2018?
Dr. Metz, can I just ask, if I could ask you a question? Your recommendation had, I'm, I'm going to say close to, if not exactly, a million dollars in pavement, sidewalk, and guardrails, is that? I'm just trying to get a sense of what you actually.
About, about 1.1 million dollars, yes.
Okay, so it's like seven fifty, four forty, and fifty?
No, it's five, five fifty, four forty, and fifty.
Five fifty, four forty for sidewalks?
Uh, four forty, four forty, four forty for sidewalks, yes.
Okay, and, and fifty for, for the guardrail, okay.
That was what was submitted.
Cause what I see is six fifty, three hundred, and fifty.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm asking the capital planning committee, your recommendations for, for.
What we recommended was that there be five fifty out of the capital budget for pavement.
Right.
Four fifty out of chapter ninety.
Right.
Four forty for sidewalks out of capital, fifty grand for guardrail replacement, and then reserve 200,000 for pavement preservation if funding was available.
Right, that was the, okay, okay.
So, so this is confusing, because that's not what is on the sheet.
Right, so pavement phase two was 200,000, pavement phase one is five fifty, if you will.
Yes, yes.
Okay, and, and a low, okay, so, I'm, I was just, thank you, that's, so that total then of 1,250, excuse me, 1,200,000 added to what was above there is where you got your original number of one point, okay, great.
And that the extra 200,000 would have been our next on the list if the funding is available.
Right, and, and of course, the question is, and what if 200,000 less is available, but I'll let you take, deal with that as, within the next, well, I don't.
We deal with that.
Well, but, we deal with the num, the, the bottom line number, but I'd love to get the recommendation of the capital planning committee.
You already asked him for that, he'll give you that.
Right, right, I already asked him for that, so.
So, Dr. Metz, okay, just to be clear, because this is not on the sheet, and I understand the formatting issue was, so you're saying pavement preservation is five fifty, what you're recommending?
We would recommend five fifty out of the capital budget.
Yes.
For, for, plus an additional four fifty.
From chapter nine, I get that part.
So a total of a million.
Right, and then plus four forty for sidewalk?
There was a number that we were provided to, as what would be necessary to place sidewalks.
Alright, but that's your record, cause I see 300 here.
I don't know where this number came from.
But, but it's actually four forty?
Yes.
Okay, so five fifty plus four forty out of the general fund?
Yes.
Plus fifty for guardrail, okay.
Me? Good. I find, and it's not, it's not certainly you, Steven, I, I guess it's a general comment for town manager. I find it a little bit concerning when I look at the totals, and the schools put in for 638,000. Public works put in for 26, parks and rec total looks like 235, and that's a pool, and then you got the equipment. I guess the unfortunate thing is, these documents, when they, when they become public, portray that that's all our needs. That we're not showing truly what our needs are to requests, and it's not to you, I mean, you're evaluating what it is, I guess it, it's an open discussion. I think I've had this with Paul, and I've had this with Steven, is that by not having a, a more robust program put together, even though it would be denied, it would still be a record that we've identified we needed. And this doesn't, this does not reflect, and this is really towards town manager, it, it does not reflect the current needs of our community for this year or any year. I mean, they're, you know, like you're saying, even if you're saying down on the pavement preservation, for instance, we could use 4 million dollars a year, why don't we just say it? That we figured that's how much we could use, but we're only going to give it 700,000. And it's not for you, Steve, I mean, that's basically for the, for the town manager. It, it does bother me, though, that, here we got, here we got a report that's public that looks like the schools have identified 638,000 worth of work, and when we slip down basically to DPW, which is the town, we've got a window replacement, a library 196,000, a gate for 26, and a pool for 235, and then just equipment, and plus our, our normal asphalt program.
Richard, where are you getting those, where do you get those totals?
Oh, it's, it's just.
Did you do your own math, or?
No, I was just adding up these figures here.
Okay, alright, but it's not on the sheet, alright.
Yeah, but it's, I, I think that, that bothers me somewhat is the fact that it's almost impossible to get this word across and have people understand that, you know, I was talking to a school person today, and I said, you know, you have to acknowledge this, and your needs are met. Every single need that you've identified and ever brought to this town has been met, with the one exception, this year is full-day kindergarten. And that I said on the school side, or on the, the town side, we're millions and millions of dollars worth of deficiencies that are going unmet, but we don't seem to, to put it out to the public so that they understand just how much is out there, and keep reinforcing it that it's out there.
Well, this is, I respond, even though this is more a philosophical discussion between you and the town manager, it seems to me that it would be appropriate to publish the five-year plan with the totals in it, so that people are very aware that one-year budgets are, only show a snapshot of part of the needs.
Right, well, I mean, we clearly can do an asphalt analysis, you just use asphalt, because it's easy, it's a big money area. So you can get a clear analysis, tell us how much we should be spending per year if we're on a 20-year program in our community, and that this figure's not out there. It's in the reports, and it's nestled down, and it's hidden, but yet, we hardly allocate as much money as we should be allocating just for routine maintenance. Now, I think, Steven, you know that too, and the figures, we, we should be spending over 500,000 on routine maintenance on the roads. And that's not big paving, that's just routine stuff. So, but yet, we, by not really beating the drum hard, it, we, we seem to be sending a message that everything is basically okay, and it's really not.
Well, it seems to me that coordination between the town manager and the select board would be very appropriate to make the, the town aware of this.
Well, and, and the capital comes in on it too, I mean, they're, they're, we all weigh together, we're all team members on that. But it, it never, we just have never done that big job of selling what our total deficiencies are. And I understand, we're not going to get them funded, but it, but I do know, you know, like I had the discussion with the schools, and I said, every one of your needs that you have identified has been met. And that's not true on the town side.
Well, you're getting an argument from me.
Yeah, millions and millions and millions of unfunded jobs out there.
Argue.
Yeah, so, anyway, no, it wasn't argued, it was a fil, more of a philosophical thing. The, I don't have any, I don't have any things on, on your guys' recommendations, it looks like you went down pretty good on it. The, and I'll make a suggestion, though, when we actually get into negotiation, that the fire suppression system upgrades at, at the schools, but they've been there since the addition was put on, so that's a long-range problem. And it, it may be solvable by lifting up the tiles, but that violates some of the ventilations in there and everything else, but I also think, and I've shared this with Steven, that this is an absurd price. I mean, when I consider that I could put heating systems in six homes for one of these things, it just doesn't make sense.
Well, that's why we, we asked it to be deferred until that evaluation took place.
Right, right, but, but the fact is, I would like, I'd like to see the board consider placeholders on those, so that we don't lose them, because if we don't, you have to remember, we, there's not enough money in reserves to pull to do the jobs.
It is in my, it is in my list of secondary priorities.
Okay.
And you'll, it'll be a lot more apparent when you have a chance to look at that.
Mr. Chair, is it timely to go over, uh, community preservation and see what that?
Yeah, pretty close.
Before that, do you mind if I just, a follow-up comment to Richard, just quickly?
You can have two.
Alright, just because I think, you know, when I look at what was on our five-year plan from last year, which included, you know, American Disabilities Act improvements to, to the public safety building, to the police and the fire department, to the tune of 51,000, and to Reynolds Pool, to the tune of 35,000. And, like you say, Richard, these didn't even come up in the discussion, and, and, you know, we look at the things that get sort of disappear from the discussion, and town, people in the town may not realize, but ADA requirements are serious things, and, and we want to work our town friendly to folks with disabilities. And, and I don't know exactly what's needed at the fire department, police department, or the pool, but it's, looks like it's just pushing back another year, and, and I just wonder if next year, the same thing's going to happen, and we're going to get our, our, our plan and say, well, now it's going to move back another year, because you can't afford it.
One thing that I think could happen is that you might send a notice or a letter to the town manager asking that this be included in next year's budget. As Mr. Foster and Mrs., Mr., Mr. Gold will know, I don't have the ability to add things to what the town manager recommends. We can make suggestions, but we can't add it.
Right.
So, can I just say, going forward, I, you know, the discussion about sort of the running totals and, and sort of lower priorities, I, I kind of feel hamstrung to have that discussion, because, like, I don't even see the sum total on this sheet. And again, that, I'm not, that's obviously not your issue, but I, I would like for us to have a good sheet with all the numbers on it, you know, before we actually vote on this stuff.
Oh, we will.
Alright, I mean, we're all agreed on that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we'll get, we'll get more, but you basically got most of the information, we got some more recommendations coming from, something happening in the printing process, so, but anyway.
I'll provide, I'll provide the copies that really reflect what our recommendations are.
Thank you, okay, you want to?
And, and that will show sort of your higher and lower priorities?
Yes.
Kind of like what Mark was saying?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
So in advance of closure, well, you know, we, we thank you for the effort that you and your group put in. Mark and I both know how much time you guys put into it, and it's a significant effort, you know, a good cooperation of a, a great group of people. I mean, you guys get to gather in the middle of the winter and work this thing out, when it's, it's, you're not even supposed to be outside. But, anyway, a full appreciation, I'm sure, from the town manager and this board.
Yeah, if you had a job last winter in this.
We're going to, we're going to move on to him.
No, I get that, but we haven't, I, I, my question is, there was some other items you didn't, does this Elmwood outlet repair, we didn't discuss that. I mean, if we're going to discuss it at a different point.
No, go ahead.
We recommended that be funded, I don't understand.
Okay, what is it?
It's, it's a storm sewer outlet, or drainage project, because if it was, if it was sanitary source of water, it wouldn't be on the water plant.
I, I, I know, but, I mean, if we're going to spend more than, if we're going to spend 122,000, I'd like to have more than a five-word description, so.
You got a, you got a definition on that, or?
It's, it's in those files that were transmitted, I can certainly open up one for, it's probably in the highway file.
I guess, Steven, the, the moral of the story is, nobody's opening up the, the Google, the Google docs, because they're so tough to get to. I mean, you know, I.
The, the files aren't, the files are substantial, because there actually is a lot of information in them, and so they're not emailed, they're, they're too large to email, and so, like we do for a lot of our documents, we try and use a downloadable, download location. And, you know, I think that the board has kind of had a more bent towards a paperless approach, hence the Google Drive. Of course, paper copies are available upon request.
Okay. So, I mean, when we've discussed these projects in years past, like, kind of talked about, you know, is this an imminent thing, is it a, you know, critical thing, I don't know, what, what was your assessment of that? I mean, is it something that can wait, I mean, it's sort of like everything else we've discussed, is it something that can wait, or is it something?
Yeah, I'm not a civil engineer, but when I went to look at this thing, it looked like it's crumbling.
Is actually pictures of it, if you go into the applications, there's pictures of stuff, and there's a narrative that talks about how it's broken and crumbling and needed to repair.
Cause, like, the thing last year that was kind of the hair-on-fire thing was Crest, Crestview Circle? It was, I mean, is it, was it kind of comparable, it's kind of comparable to that in terms of urgency?
It's failed.
Right.
Yeah, it's failed, so.
But as you point out, we have a number of things that have failed.
That's the one we know failed.
Right, right.
We're trying to track, tackle that sort of thing about one year at a time, going from the.
Sure, sure.
And unfortunately, it doesn't, that doesn't fall under chapter nine, because we can't use those funds for that. It's not connected directly with the roadway, it, you would think it would, but usually, once you solve that 50-foot prism, it's, you're on your own.
I mean, I think there's, we've had this discussion internally. You know, we were talking to our state senator's office about projects, kind of, you know, public infrastructure projects, less than 500,000. And based on the lesson we learned from Elmwood Ave, Avondale, Crestview, you know, just pick a culvert. Because the, the town was, a lot of those subdivisions were all built out in the 50s, and they're all kind of in that same level of decline, and they're about 200,000 bucks a piece to fix, so obviously, we can't do all of them in one year, and so, you know, doing two, or doing one or two of them a year would be decent progress, but up at there, there are minimally dozens of them in the community that are probably, you know, in some various state of, of disrepair, and they're not really accessible. I mean, you can slip line some, but others, like Crestview, had to do a full excavation. So that's, that's really nature of the fact, that, that's really reflective of how, when the town was built out, and the types of materials and, that were used at the time. And I, I want to echo Richard's comments, I mean, I, I do go to the meetings, or some of the meetings with the capital planning committee, they meet even more than I attend, and the members of the committee do take it very seriously, they are genuinely curious about town projects and how we go about it, and they do want to know the details, so I want to commend them. It's not, it's a thankless job, as we prove every year, so I want to, I want to thank them for their seriousness, even if we don't always agree on what the recommendation should be, it's not, I, I know that if they disagree with something I recommended, I know it's not because they didn't think about it.
So, Steven, on the culvert situation, I mean, what's the magnitude of this problem? I mean, you said that there's lots of them, I mean, what are we, what's the?
I mean, to some extent, it's, when do you see, when, when you notice it, Crestview Circle sinkhole opened up in the surface.
Right, no, I get that.
Thirty feet higher than the thing, so obviously, you know that there's a big problem there. It, it's something, I'll be honest with you, it's, to some extent, it's reactive. A, a, a problem besides the drainage comes to the fore, you realize that the problem is tied to the drainage. Inverness Lane had a sinkhole, I mean, it's, that's how usually it going. You know, we do, and again, we do chart these out on our five-year plan, because we do know that some of them are in various states of decline, but sometimes, ones like Crestview, you'll have a sinkhole or some kind of failure, and it moves to the top of the list. I would say, I don't know where Elmwood is on that, but, you know, the, the guys from the DPW said that this is their number one for a drainage project, and I, I, they, they had the pic, the picture documentation, the narrative to show that it's, it has failed and needs to be replaced.
Now, the water and sewer infrastructure, and, and you guys didn't do that, right?
No.
So, are, are we going to have a discussion of that?
As a part of the overall budget, as water and sewer commissioners, the select board does the water and sewer stuff.
Alright, and when are we going to talk about those?
During the budget discussion, the overall budget discussion and the formulation of the warrant.
Can we move on to, uh, community preservation?
Find my name.
It's good for me too.
Mr. Wise, you want to brief us on the community preservation?
Yeah, briefly, I mean, I, I think everybody knows the work, the, the mission that the community preservation committee has and the work that we do, and, and. Uh, and, and more or less the process where we get in applications that can be used for, uh, community housing, historic preservation, uh, open space and recreation. Uh, this year, by, by way of comparison, last year, I, I think we had seventeen applications for well over a million dollars. Uh, this year, there was actually nine applications, all of which are on our, our link on the website. Uh, five of them were from DPW, four of them were from other groups. There is obviously some, as people have already alluded to, some overlap between what, uh, DPW asked of capital planning and what was asked of us. Uh, we approved five, five of the applications this year, if my math is right, uh, for a total of five hundred ninety-one thousand, seven hundred dollars. Uh, the, the ones that we did approve were for a Long Metal History Finding Aid, the, uh, preservation of the personnel and payroll records. Uh, that was, that one was, we, we approved for sixty thousand dollars. The history finding aid, we approved in the amount of thirty-five thousand, seven hundred dollars. Uh, we approved the, uh, application for the residential home modification fund as part of community housing for a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, we approved the center school terrace in Ballystrud, uh, which was discussed with, uh, earlier, uh, in the amount of a hundred thirty-six thousand dollars. And the repairs to the Greenwood Pool, uh, for two hundred thirty-five thousand dollars. Uh, there were, obviously, there were also some that we denied. Now, I'll be glad to ask, uh, try to answer questions on any of these, uh, with the caveat that I don't necessarily speak for the whole committee. We have a very functional, very active committee and people have their own particular views on it, but I can certainly give people a sense of it.
Stephen, a quick question on home modification fund. Is this the second or the third?
Third.
Third round? And I, I assume you've gone back with, I think it's the Council on Aging or the Adult Center to find out how they spent the previous money? And how was your, what was your response to that, how that was done?
Yeah, it was, uh, there are two things. First of all, yeah, this is the third tranche, or third go-around on this, if you, if you, if you will. Uh, and the first two have been over the years very successful because they've managed to keep, help keep, uh, seniors who have low, who are of modest means, uh, in their houses. It's, it's for building thing, anything from, uh, making a handicap accessible walkway to a handicap accessible restroom, uh, other repairs.
It also has put roofs on and repointed chimneys that were falling down and things like that, I presume?
Yeah, it, it has, the, the limit on the applica, there are two limits on the application. Historically, one has been, it's been for five thousand dollars per person. And they, that, each individual has to submit a financial statement. Uh, it had, the number that Ms. Sada from the Council on Aging requested was to bump it up to ten thousand dollars, uh, per application. And that's simply, uh, a reflection of, uh, what, time and inflation, I guess is the best way to put it.
So what is it now?
It, it, no, and no individual application would be able to exceed ten thousand dollars.
So now it's ten thousand?
Yeah, in the, in this new, in the application that was approved this year, yes. Uh, and there is, I think there's a committee of three, I believe, that, that looks at the financial statements. If anybody applies, they have to submit a financial statement. And there's, there's three people. And please don't ask me to say who's on that three-person group, cause I don't recall. Uh, but they review the application. And then there is a monitoring process, uh, about the funds.
And, and is it ordinarily oversubscribed, undersubscribed? How does that work?
Um, my.
It lasted more than a year, though, didn't it?
It does take more than a year. Uh, the last one was two or three years. You know, there, there was a little bit of a, I, I know this year, even before this year started, they had fully exhausted the fund. So it hasn't been anything done for this past year. Um, I, I think, uh, I think Amy Sada is figuring this is probably, hopefully enough for two or three years, uh, depending on need, depending on how many people apply.
And how, how much money does community preservation ha- have in each of, each one of its funds, Steve?
You would ask me that question.
I've asked Mr. Pesterzic, too, but, no, just about round, round, I mean, if you're giving out five hundred ninety-one thousand dollars, that represents, uh, uh.
I think we had, we have a total of about eight hundred seventy-seven.
That's close enough.
Is that, is that about right, Paul? Somehow, I think that's, oh, wait, let me, uh.
I don't have that.
Uh, you know what? I do have it here. Uh, at, as of right now, we had the mid-year number that we have. Uh, at, the undesignated fund has six hundred four thousand dollars. I'm just gonna give, you know, rounded off numbers. The, uh, community housing fund has two hundred twenty-eight thousand dollars. Historic preservation has thirty-nine thousand dollars. And open space has seventy-nine thousand dollars.
Thirty-nine and seventy-nine?
Yeah, I'm just rounding off, obviously.
Thank you.
And let me just ask, the, the document I'm looking at, sort of try to deal with what, um, this presentation is the draft warrant?
That's what I was looking at.
Okay, do we have anything else?
Uh, I, I thought I had circulated around a couple of months ago. Maybe I didn't. Uh, I can send people a bit of a spreadsheet that I, this is an informal spreadsheet. I think is also on our, on the, I think this is on the link on, on the town's website, uh, saying what the results of the various applications this year.
They would have just what's approved on the, on the copy of the warrant.
Correct. Yeah, the, the four that were, um, rejected, and none of these were because of merit. These were really because of, I guess I'd say, priorities. There was the Phase Four of the gravestone restoration and preservation, uh, application. That was, uh, by the historic, by the Long Metal Cemetery Association. Uh, we declined to approve the stores, library window replacement, stores, library service ramp and step repair, and the Russell Field netting, softball backstop and scoreboard replacement. Again, those are all, uh, DPW applications that were also made, uh, to capital planning.
And could you talk about sort of why the, I mean, we talked a little bit about that, why the things that you did fund came above those things?
Well, the, the ones, yeah, I think I can. Yeah, first, the Long Metal History Finding Aid. And, and again, the app, the applicants themselves can probably give a much, much more impassioned and detailed, uh, uh, presentation on these. Uh, but the one for the finding aids, Long Metal Historic Records, you might think they're all in, in one place in the town. They are not. They are all over, really all over the Commonwealth. Some of them are in Springfield, and some of them are in Town Hall, some of them are in, uh, First Church, some of them are in the library, some of them are in Springfield, some as far as Deerfield and other places. This would create a database, uh, a computerized database of where all these records are located. It would be searchable. Uh, the State Historical Society, and I forget the name of it, but it's in the application, uh, is saying, this is really, uh, I don't wanna say the wave of the future, but they're excited about this type of project. Uh, so we thought, yeah, certainly for historic preservation, that was, uh, well worth it. The preservation of the personnel and payroll records is really Phase Two of, of an application that was started last year. Paul may remember, I think there was, we approved sixty, uh, excuse me, I think we approved fifty thousand dollars last year. Uh, and that got part of the job done. This will get the rest of the, the preservation of the personnel records done, again, again, under historic preservation.
So these personnel and payroll records, um, I remember discussing this in years past, but, I mean, is this kind of a historic interest? Or, or is this kind of a, like, functioning of government interest?
Well, you know, that's, that could be a bit of a metaphysical discussion. Uh, and, and I mean that.
What I mean by that is like, you know, payroll records from the thirties probably are of no particular current need, but maybe they have some kind of historical significance, whereas payroll records from five years ago might be of a current need, but have very little historical.
Yeah, well, and I, I've checked with the state, our state association, the Coalition of Community Preservation. There is no bright line about what makes something, what date makes something historic. Uh, and, and I can, and the reason it's sort of a metaphysical discussion, that if something's not historic today, in ten years, it could well be, just because of the passage of time.
Right, right.
Um, and, yeah, in an ideal universe, would there be money to fund this out of the town budget? Uh, yeah, obviously. Uh, but also, but the, some of these records do go back, I think, to the four, qualify record of the forties and fifties. And, and they are necessary. Uh, the town has to keep them in perpetuity, basically.
Is, as a matter of?
I think as a matter of law.
Right, for the Secretary of State, we have documentation, uh, that we have to keep for so many years. These happen to be permanent records.
Yeah.
So we have to, we have to keep payroll records forever and ever?
Yes. And this will put them on microfiche, which is the preferred or the acceptable storage mechanism, so that we can actually destroy the paper records. Uh, and it'll, and it'll, it'll also be digitized, uh, so it's more easily searchable.
So that in fifty years, that technology is, is obsolete and we'll have to figure out something else?
That's a bigger pay grade than I can address.
Yeah, I know, but.
Um, the, uh, the Residential Home Modification Fund, I, I think I already spoke to that a little bit. Uh, the Ballystrud, the, uh, the center school terrace in Ballystrud, um, that one, uh, that, because center school is in the historic district and that's an historic building, it does qualify. Uh, it needs to be upgraded. Uh, and, and I think from, and we spent a lot of time, uh, talking with Mario Maza about these various applications. And I think from, from his point of view, with the applications that he gave to us, that that was his highest priority, partly for, for preservation and partly from a more practical standpoint for safety concerns, cause there's so much traffic over and around them, parts are crumbling. And, you know, he felt that that was, that was a, a safety issue for the kids.
Like the concrete?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, and then the, the last one that we did approve was the Greenwood Park Pool. Uh, that one had first come up two or three years ago and then was, and was declined at that time. And, and I think it was partly just because of resources. Uh, and then I think there was a discussion of it, Steve, if I recall correctly, last year, where we weren't sure, the, the town wasn't sure, you weren't sure whether it made sense to put that, uh, to, whether.
I got that, too.
Yeah, whether it was worthwhile. But then in the last year, the town, I think, has done, done, number one, uh, done some numbers. And because of how many people, how many kids use that pool for the, uh, for the summer schoo, uh, for the, uh, camp, rather, uh, that it, it, it does generate some revenue for the town. It, I, I, personally speaking, I, I, I'm biased in favor of it. When my, my now adult children were, uh, uh, kids, we used to bike down to that pool about four nights a week. Uh, it is, uh, it's a great resource in the town. It's leaking water. It really does need, uh, an upgrade. So, uh, and that one, uh, we thought was, was worthy.
Two, two questions. One is, uh, what percentage of the money that we're appropriating here is state funds this year?
I don't have that breakdown. Uh, I, I just know what we have available. I.
But is it eighteen percent?
No, I think they better answer your question. We're getting a reimbursement closer to thirty percent.
Okay.
I think it's the high twenties that we're getting a reimbursement from the state. I think maybe that's what he's after.
Yeah, it, it might be. For, for every dollar that we, that we allocate, I think we, historically, we've gotten about twenty-five or twenty-six percent back. And I, I think it's a little lower this year, to be honest with you. I think I saw something that it's in the low twenties this year. And that's just a function of how many, that more communities across the Commonwealth.
Right.
Have it now accepted.
No, but I, I'm, I'm, my only point is that our money's going twenty-five percent further than if it was just our money.
Oh, yeah.
That's my only.
That, that, that's one of the beauties of the CPA, which, if, if memory serves, this is now the tenth year, tenth year that we've had it in town.
My, my second, I guess it's not really a question, but a comment, Stephen, that is, that I, I'd mentioned that to, uh, our first pass through the warrant, I was hoping that we could combine these by fund source, so that, I assume you've got a couple here from housing or a couple from historic preservation? So we can make.
Yeah, and I, I, coincidentally enough, and I know this, this was, uh, Paul had made the inquiry to me a couple of weeks ago. I then sent an inquiry off to, I did two things. Number one, we had a meeting, a CPA, CPC meeting on March eighth. Uh, and I kind of got a, a sense of what the committee thought. But I also checked with the state organization. And by coincidence, when I got home tonight from work, I got a very long email from, uh, Stuart Saginaw, who is the chair of the, uh, the chair of the, uh, state organization. And I'll be glad to circulate this email. The long and the short of it is that there's nothing in the statute that would prohibit combining them. But if you wanted to talk about best practices, uh, it really is better to have them all separate for a variety of reasons. Uh, from my, and I, from my point of view personally, and I think from the point of view of the committee, um, it just makes more sense to have them each separate because each one of them is being advocated by a different group. Uh, and if you just lump it, and, and they're from different funds, uh, and sometimes a combination of funds, cause often some of the money might be coming from historic preservation and the rest of it coming from undesignated. Uh, and, you know, there's a chance that if, you know, and I don't think, I, I hope there's nothing controversial on any of these this year, but if there's one project, one application that's controversial one year out of seven or eight that are done, it could, it could torpedo, for lack of a better way of putting it, the entire grant request at town meeting. And that would really be, uh, that's something I'd really hate to see happen.
I'd, I'd love next year to go to the CPA, only because we do it routinely for capital projects, have one warrant article that lists all the projects. If people wanna change it, they change the one item. And, and it ends up, you have one discussion about either capital or one discussion about community preservation in my, and I, and I can see where, if you have different fund sources, you might wanna separate out the undesigned from the housing, from the, from the open space. But anyway, I'd just like to discuss.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll circulate the email to you. I'd be, I'd be glad to do that, uh, cause, because Stuart Saginaw provides a much, a much more detailed and cogent explanation for it. Uh, and he said, really, across the Commonwealth, there's one or two communities that he's aware of that, that bunch everything. But they regularly, like, I think he said Nantucket, and they regularly have fifteen or twenty applications every year that, well in excess of a million dollars. But almost uniformly across the Commonwealth, we do it, uh, other towns do it the same way we do. And I understand why it would be nice to shorten them all down. I think last year, there were eleven applications on. And it just took, half of, half of the articles were for CPC. I do understand that, that part of it, too. But I, I think, and, but I think our committee would recommend continuing to do it the, the way we've been doing it.
Good. Thank you.
I'd have a discussion with you via email. We, we talked about the, um, a couple of years ago, you and I sat and talked about the program on the, the funds and the thought process behind the, the origination of CPA funds. And I, and I thought we'd exchanged, I know we exchanged, uh, a point of view that said, one of the reasons was designed to fund projects which normally would not be high enough, um, on a priority list in the community to be funded through base allocations.
Either they're not funded, not high enough on a priority list, or that they simply couldn't be funded. So for, for instance, the town can't fund, uh, pro, an application by the Long Metal Historic Society, we can. Or the cemetery or so forth.
Right. Within it also was the, the projects that may not get priority within the community, one is competing against all of our other needs. And, and I think I share with you my concern that, uh, a project like the pool project, that has taken two hundred and seventy-some thousand dollars out of a fund, didn't seem to, in my mind, doesn't fit kind of in that, that box of why the CPA funds were brought up. Now, maybe a legal purchase, but it didn't fit within that realm. It seemed like a convenient place for somebody, DPW, to throw projects in and get them funded.
Yeah.
Because that, that is a responsibility of this town, and we have it in our budgets to do that, to our capital program, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And I guess my real bottom line is, I'd hate to think how many small twenty-five thousand dollar projects could be done if the community was truly engaged and knew enough about CPA and knew that, for instance, they could do a landscape project someplace or some improvement to community, small little community type things.
Yeah, and I'm certainly not going to disagree with you. Again, it gets, it becomes a little bit of a metaphysical discussion. Uh, and, and I can't fault, uh, Mario Maza for seeking funding from, at two different sources, uh, because that, that's his job. Uh, and, uh, you know, in, in an ideal universe, uh, something like the, the pool might well be a, a capital project, but capital, you know, capital planning is already, uh, overburdened, if you will.
We have, I'd like to chime in on that. Uh, the two committees have really tried to work together over the last two or three years to leverage our, our combined funds as, as well as we can.
Well, I want to talk about the cooperation you guys got going. That's great. It was just that, that one point, that it seems like it's migrated into a go-to fund. Like you say, we got five DPW projects in there. And you got more DPW projects than you have other projects. And the fund, certainly, I don't think the backbone of the fund was brought in so we could have a second special capital improvement program for DPW to use. I thought it was brought in to pick up the community things that would never get funded with capital.
And it has been used for a lot of those things. Uh, you know, it's, it has been used for a lot of those things. The cemetery restoration projects, uh, the new roof on the stores, on the, uh, on the museum, uh, various library projects. And what, two things that are not on here, that were, that were funded last year but haven't been started, uh, yet, are a replacement of the stores, uh, the steps at the stores' library and the sidewalk at the stores' library. In the case of the steps, it's also going to include an ADA compliant, uh, ramp, uh, to replace the one that's there. So, and those are, those are already in the hopper. So there's a fair amount of money that does go to community types of projects at the town, that the town could not otherwise fund.
This is a big chunk.
Yeah, uh, agreed.
Big chunk. Okay. That's just a point I wanted to make.
Oh, you know, Richard, to, to that point, uh, to me, the two hundred thirty-five thousand dollars for the pool seems similar to funding, what was it, eight hundred thousand dollars for the tennis courts? I mean, it's both recreation. It could be a town capital project, but we're able to fund it and get the state to kick in. and get the state to kick in some of the money.
Yeah, twenty percent.
Right.
Okay, well, I, I mean, we can use that logic all day long, it's just the fact, I went back to the, the genesis of the program, and I tried to capture why it was put in.
Yep.
And that's, that's my only point, was the fact, if that was the intent, then it seemed like we'd be trying to generate more people to get small projects in there. So let's have more, let's have more celebrations and more parades, right?
Yeah, and, and last year, actually, we had, well, if we had seventeen applications, I think eight or nine of those, I forget which, were projects that were not DPW-related projects. Uh, so, yeah, we, that's, and that's a, for a town this size, I think there's a fair, I think there's been enough interest generated, uh, every year, the Cemetery Association, Historic Society, the, uh, the library, they're, they know, uh, they know about us, they're not shy about coming to us, and I, we've built that up over the years, and there's been a few others over the years as well. Uh, you know, so, so for instance, uh, you know, Conservation came to us last year, and we funded, we approved the funding for the, uh, to clear out, uh, the meadows of, of knotweed and other stuff. Again, it's, it's, it's hard, and, and that's what this fund is for, that, it'd be hard to find that in the general operating, that, that wouldn't come out of a capital planning budget.
Right.
That might just have to come out of the town budget, budget generally, and it's, uh, there's a lot of pressures on the select board, and I can picture it being, yeah, coming up with fifty thousand dollars for that, uh, might be pretty hard.
And that was the purpose for your fund?
Yeah.
One of the primaries, yeah, okay.
I just, I would
Go ahead.
Just comment, the, uh, Long Meadow, uh, History Finding Act, it's a great idea, it's really good, and I'm glad that that's going to be happening. I was just curious, who, who's behind that idea?
Uh, that was, the Historic Society, and I think Alan Betsy McKee are the, are the real source behind that, they are, uh, history mavens, uh, they, uh, they, uh, they are, uh, they're great, they are really committed to the history of the town, and I, I think they're the ones who really generated that.
Yeah, 'cause it's, well, no, no, it's a great idea, and I'm glad we're moving forward, we're moving forward on that, I hope.
Yeah, any other, uh, questions?
You might have answered this in years past, and I may just be forgetting, but, um, in terms of projects from the last years, the previous years, is one of the things that, you know, I, I think is a little bit of a pitfall of this program, at least potentially, is that you're giving money to non-governmental agents, right?
Yeah.
You know, and so you don't have quite the level of accountability, and is your, is, is your committee involved in sort of following up on that sort of thing?
A- absolutely, there, there's, over the last, certainly over the last three years, uh, and I think I've been sharing out three or four years, yeah, we, for lack of a better way of putting it, we kind of have grown up, when we first started, when the CPCs first started in two thousand and five or two thousand and six, that wasn't as high a priority. Uh, it is now, what we require, uh, when we, when it, if, uh, if an application is approved by us and then approved at town meeting, in the award letter, uh, what we do is we tell people, right from the beginning, that they, that they're obligated to provide a quarterly report to us on the progress of the project. Uh, and it doesn't have to be anything, and there's a form we have, but it doesn't have to be anything fancy, but that's a way for us to monitor what's going on. Uh, any procurement has to go through the town, so that, you know, prevailing wage and all the other bidding processes are taken care of, uh, and the, the letter lets them know that. Uh, and then we, uh, ultimately, we expect to get a final report from an organization or from an applicant, which will then allow us to close out that project, and if there's money that hasn't been spent, then it comes back into the fund, and, and thankfully, there's, that has happened a few times, uh, as well. So, so, yeah, we do try to monitor it, because we are concerned that, uh, we are accountable, that, that the, the money, the use of the funds should be accounted for.
And have you run in, in, anything that's concerned you, or has it been pretty spot on?
They've been pretty good, uh, yeah, there, there, actually, there have been, there have been a couple of applications, the reason we started asking for quarterly reports is that there were a couple of grant applicants, uh, that we couldn't get answers from, uh, and, uh, so we imposed this, you know, this quarterly report requirement, and that's been pretty good. And our administrator, Marissa, uh, sends out, is pretty good at reminding people that the quarterly reports are due, uh, we've been getting them. Uh, and one of the things that we have, one of the, I guess the only, the only lever we have is if somebody were to apply and receive funds and then not be accountable, it's gonna, it's gonna be, uh, they're gonna have a hard time applying again.
Right.
Because we have a, you know, if, if they either, we haven't had a situation of misuse of funds, but if there's just some slub of, they won't give us any reports, or they won't be accountable, or they won't do things, uh, and then they can't really, uh, come back again.
But you, you don't have anything outstanding where you've got something concerning, where unaccounted funds?
No.
All right, Steve and Steve, really appreciate, especially appreciate
Yes, thank you.
There's a lot of effort, there's a lot more than people understand, so.
Well, it's all, it's also, it's actually, it's a pleasure too, uh, because I've learned a lot more about the town this way, and, you know, it, it feels like there's a great, this is a great way to get some things done that wouldn't otherwise be done.
That's true.
Some of a little bit of a history game, it's particularly fun.
Okay, thank you, thank you for your contribution.
Thanks.
All right, Mark, do you want to take the next order of business on your thing?
Oh, okay, sure, I, uh, thanks, Richard. At, at our last meeting, I, I had tried to propose a, a, a potentially different way of, of funding the town, town budget, and it, it, it's a way that would allow us to debate on town floor, uh, the, the bulk of the, bulk of the budget presentation separately from potentially controversial issues, and Paul Pasterzic, at the time, noted that there were, might be some, some concerns or issues, and so, over the last, I don't know, couple of days, um, he and I, mostly Paul, I will say, worked to try to put together a, 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 a different kind of proposal, and I, Debbie sent it out today, I don't know if anybody else needs a a written version, Alex, do you have a?
I, I printed it.
Okay, great, and, and, uh, so, I, I just want to go over it really quickly, and I'm doing, gonna do it in concept and not in numbers, 'cause the numbers will drive us crazy. And, and more than that, because Paul Pasterzic has gone through the numbers, he'll do it again to make sure they work, but the, the purpose of this was to figure out a potential way of, of funding what we needed now, and yet taking advantage of the fact that our, our assumed revenue streams are just that, assumed, and that they may come in, in fact, the state now is talking about them potentially coming in higher than we put into our budget. And taking advantage of, why should we struggle now, or, or, you know, strangle a, a project that we'd like to fund, if in fact we'll have the money come, you know, July first, and so, what I tried to look at here was just a comment on, uh, a couple of assumptions, and that's what my first page says, is what the assumptions were, that chapter seventy, or excuse me, uh, the net state aid is five million, seven hundred and forty thousand, eight, seventy-seven, and that's something that was in, uh, all versions of our budget, chapter seventy, revenue of four million, four ninety oh oh six is in all the versions of our budget, and a net property tax of forty-eight million, nine forty-four oh thirty-seven, which is also in all versions of our budget. Uh, you know, the, the problem that we have is the town manager and his February twenty-ninth budget had to reduce OPEB capital in the school department below either policies or budgets, and so, if you go to that kind of table in the lower half of the first page, uh, what it shows here is, for example, OPEB, our policy was, would, would have funded OPEB at three sixty-seven, three hundred, but, uh, and, and oh, by the way, the two hundred, excuse me, twenty sixteen budget, it shows what it was funded at, is two hundred and thirty-seven thousand, and you can see that the town manager's recommendation was to fund it at two hundred and seventy-five thousand, actually, a, a decline or reduction of ninety-one thousand dollars versus, ninety-one thousand, five hundred versus policy. Go over to the capital column, you can see what the policy was, one point six million, last year, we funded it one point four million, the town manager recommended in February twenty-ninth to fund it at one point five million, and again, the difference between the town manager's recommendations and a policy is about a hundred thousand dollars. Then I want to go over to the schools, and which is the purpose of, of addressing this, you know, the two thousand and sixteen budget, thirty-two point one million dollars, the school committee's request for two thousand and seventeen, thirty-three point two million dollars, but the town manager's recommendation for two thousand and seventeen was thirty-two point nine million dollars, essentially, three hundred thousand dollars less than the school committee asked, and that was the three hundred and eight thousand, four fourteen number that we've been looking at all along, and, and this
Sorry, the, the three hundred what?
Three hundred and eight thousand, four fourteen, Alex, that we're looking at, is the difference between what the schools would want in an ideal situation, and what first passed the town manager, uh, was, was able to, to offer them, uh, through, through a balanced budget. So I, my, I, I want to just focus about on how could we overcome that three hundred and eight thousand dollar difference in
Could, could I just stop you for one second?
Shoot.
'Cause I, I don't see the hundred thousand reduction
Yeah, you, you'll see it, it's gonna come, that's not in here yet, we'll get to it.
Okay.
That has not, but that has nothing to do with the
But I thought we were at two oh eight, not three oh eight, because the
Right, but that hundred thousand dollars is accumulated, is gonna go elsewhere. There's, there's all kinds of other things that
Okay.
that people wanted.
You spent it elsewhere, okay.
It's, it's spent elsewhere, I'm just trying to address
All right.
it's three oh eight, so follow me, Alex, and if there's still
Okay.
numbers, we'll, we'll go through, okay? You know, the, after the school committee submitted their budget to us of, uh, uh, with a request for three, thirty-three million, two hundred and three thousand dollars, uh, they accepted additional school choice children, which will bring them an additional twenty thousand dollars of revenue rel- relative to what was in their original budget, so i- if you will, I took that twenty thousand dollars off, and then we discussed the fact that of the additional first-year kindergarten costs, in, in subsequent years, we'd get additional state aid, because it's, uh, it's really a startup cost, but it's in, it's in, uh, in arrears by a year. And so there's a hundred thousand dollars that's really one-time allocation, it's not recurring cost to the town, and so my thought was that we could fund a hundred thousand of that from something like our, our free cash or stabilization fund, or something that, again, is not reoccurring revenue, and, and that's in keeping with our policy, where we won't fund, uh, ongoing expenses with one-time revenue, but we could fund one-time expenses with one-time revenue. And so if you look at that, the, the actual budget amount needed to fund free full-day kindergarten is really only a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars of, of, of what we'd need to come up with, and so, my thought process was, we come up with that in a variety of ways, and one way was to ask the, the school department to fund fifty thousand of that, and let the town be responsible, or try to come up with savings to fund a hundred and thirty-eight thousand of it. So, if you look at the number of one thirty-eight, four fourteen, is a number
Can we stop one minute, though, you go
I'm just, those are random assumptions.
Oh, I know, I know, I was going back to that hundred thousand, because you're taking that out of free cash.
Right.
So that is an expenditure.
Oh, absolutely, the hundred thousand is an expenditure, but it's a one-time expenditure, not
Well, I know, but it still is an expenditure.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and it, and it, it doesn't come back to us.
Absolutely, I, I'm not gonna argue with you, absolutely.
So, so Mark
I'm just trying to budget balance, not fun balance.
This, this idea of
Program balance.
starting with the three oh eight instead of the two, I don't, could you explain that a little bit?
Yeah, because what's happened, Alex, is, I'm, because I'm using the two twenty-nine budget, there's additional expenditures that we've, I've seen floated by the select board, everything from add-back ins, crossing guards to add-back in, Bliss Tennis Court to, to adding back in.
Right.
And, and I thought the select board might need some money yet to put into the budget for things that might be on our list, Marie had a list, I had a list, you had a list. And so rather than take that first pass to the schools, I'm saying, how can we, if you will, hold that hundred thousand dollars for some of the things we want to add back, and yet still find a way to, to come up with all-day kindergarten costs?
Yeah, but, I mean, this seems ver- rather
It's parochial, absolutely.
Right, I mean, it, I mean, it's a little misleading, I mean, because three oh eight is not a number that we're dealing with right now, it's two oh eight.
Well, actually, there's no number we're dealing with, as Murray pointed out the last time.
Right, I know.
All I'm saying is the difference between
It's two oh eight, plus whatever we want to add back, plus whatever other alterations
Only if you're, you're looking at the, a, a different number from a different budget, if you look back at the two twenty-nine budget
Right.
the difference between what the school committee requested, and what was in the town manager's budget recommendation for schools, was three oh eight, four fourteen.
Right, but that got superseded, so that, I mean, that's
Right, but that got superseded, assuming we had no additions to the general government side of the budget, and my point is there, I, we've already come up with lists of things that we might want to put on the general's government side. If, if I could, Alex
Yeah.
I understand what I did here, you understand what I did here, so, let me walk through this and see if it works, okay? I'm trying to balance one thirty-eight, four fourteen at this point. That, that, if you will, assigns, and that's a terrible word, but requests the school committee to take up a fifty thousand dollars of what it would take to cost free full-day kindergarten through their thirty-three million dollar budget, and, and that's point one five percent, uh, of, of, of that, and I understand that they, we're asking them to to cut zero point, refine zero point one five percent of their budget to, to fund free full-day kindergarten, in return, I'm saying, we might take some of our OPEB contribution, some of our capital contribution, as the number's shown here, thirty or a hundred and eight, and put those at risk, okay? So, if you, if you will, as you move to, then to page two, what I've tried to outline here very briefly, is three articles that might go into the town warrant to fund the budget. Article A, as I showed it here, and I won't go through the numbers, 'cause they're very complex for us, and we're looking at the paper, the people at home will go nuts. But essentially, has a full budget that the schools are short this three fifty-eight, four fourteen, okay? Why three fifty-eight, not three oh eight? Because it's three oh eight plus the fifty thousand they're, they're, we're asking them, uh, to, to put into it. The budget would include only two hundred and forty-five thousand, eight hundred dollars of OPEB funding, which is above our two thousand and sixteen budget, but still short of our, our policy recommendations. And the budget would include one point four million dollars of capital, which is well short of our policy of one point six million dollars in capital, okay?
And we're
Okay, but that would be Article A, if you will, okay? And I propose adding them back through Articles B and C, okay? Article B would transfer a hundred thousand from free cash into the schools, that's what we said about using one-time money to fund part of their, their, their all-day kindergarten, okay? But the critical part of this is Article C, which is what I wanted to look at, which is really s- come, trying to fund the balance of the one thirty-eight, four fourteen, and how we would fund that based on different tiers of revenue from chapter seventy, which is the s- s- uh, general fund aid to schools from the state. We put in our budget an assumption of four million, four hundred and ninety thousand dollars. So I'm saying, if the budget comes in at four million, four hundred and ninety thousand and six dollars, the schools get funded the full one thirty-eight. In essence, what I'm saying is, we'll fund all but fifty thousand dollars of free full-day kindergarten as the budget's planned, and the hit comes out of capital and OPEB. So that's Article C, Part A, that's kind of the baseline. But Article C, Part B would say, if chapter seventy funds come in, in up to seventy thousand dollars more, now we start funding OPEB and, 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 and capital at increased levels. That's the next increment, and the third increment is if capital come, if, if chapter seventy comes even, even higher, we continue to fund OPEB and capital, these times now up to our full policy recommendation. And finally, there's, on the, on the next page, a Part D, which I think the, the letter D didn't show up, but it's, it's, it's still yet another increment, which I'm not sure is gonna happen, but that then not only funds, fully funds OPEB, fully funds capital, but then brings this fifty thousand dollars back to the school system to fully fund full-day kindergarten. So essentially, that plan attempts to fund full, full-day kindergarten, putting our OPEB and, and capital increases at risk, and yet, if state aid generally designated to schools comes in at higher levels, we actually then get to fund those project, those components, OPEB and capital, up to, in, in a couple of increments, up to our total amount. And I know this is pretty complicated, and I think there's still probably some numbers that need some minor tweaking, but the, the point here is that the schools are risking fifty thousand dollars.
Okay, but where's the hundred, we, you said we'd get to the hundred thousand that we, we don't have to pay.
So now, look at the very bottom of page three, the general comment, where I have Bliss Tennis Court, sidewalk repair, school crossing guards, that's gonna total a hundred thousand dollars, Alex. I just know they will, or I'm, I'm making the broad assumption they will.
See, this is
Because if we add anything like that in there, how are we gonna pay for it, if we give the hundred thousand to the schools?
Right, I mean Right, I mean, I I guess that you, to me, that this is, I mean, let's face it, this is a very complicated. But but to and and to kind of start at three oh eight four fourteen. When we know it's two oh eight four fourteen, then then it it becomes extremely difficult to understand.
Alex, if if we sat here and did it to two oh eight, then the first time I came along and said we want to fund either bliss tennis courts. Or sidewalk repairs or school crossing guards, the first question, where are you gonna get the money for that and what are you gonna cut? Whereas this gives us us a flexibility of a hundred thousand dollars to add back in to the. To the town manager's recommended budget for the things that I've heard everybody on this on the select board panel wants to add back.
But but the the sort of contingent votes, like which I hope is an okay.
Yeah, that's great.
These contingent votes that you're proposing that we take at town meeting, we will have known, I mean, the. The the hundred thousand will be have been worked into this.
Right, right, the hundred thousand would be already be into part A.
Right, right.
Right, that'll already be into part A and so there will not be that.
We would rerun this. I mean.
Right, but right, we'd have, so anything we come up with and if we come up with less than a hundred thousand dollars, Alex. Clearly, we rerun the numbers and do it differently, all I'm saying is that that. Uh for for this to have been worked out perfectly before we had any chance to discuss things that we, you know, I. I've talked about adding in a police vehicle and and you know, bliss tennis courts were in there, you've talked about crossing guards, Marie's talking about. Some other things, I see Tom's got a couple of things on on his list, so you know, if we didn't leave that flexibility. I think you understand what I'm saying.
Right, but I mean, but this isn't something we can present to the school committee, I mean.
Well, I think we could, what I would present to the school committee clearly is is. The proposal of article C as I wrote it here and and. To for the most part, those numbers can be what we want them to be. And then we go back and fix the article A based on what we decide we wanna add in, you know, and and I know Paul Pester's got a lot of. Reconciling to do, he's put together a different spreadsheet of his own that that really makes this a little bit more. Visible for his his purposes because he does it as an incremental spreadsheet, but I think what you go to the school committee and said, are you willing to put money at risk? And A, put money at risk for the for the full day kindergarten. I should say, A, take fifty thousand dollars out of your budget, point one five percent of your budget. Because the town can't fund that, B, put another fifty thousand at risk based on chapter seventy money and C. Make it be known that if chapter seventy money comes in above presum- you know, the presumptive levels or the assumed levels. Those monies then go to fund OPEB and capital.
I I just, the thing, it's it's a great um, a great way to move, I mean, I think it does. You know, would help us if if chapter seventy goes up and if there's more legislation that it goes up further in the next few years. But I don't see how we could give the money and then have them give us money back, I guess I would think.
They're not.
The only way I could see is if we if we reduce their budget and then make adjustments mid-year.
I I didn't understand this either, okay? Chapter seventy money doesn't goes to the schools, it comes into the town as general revenue, right, Paul? So it never, it comes to us, but generally that money is seen as designated a hundred percent for the school, but it's general. Government revenue, it's not their money, we're giving them and taking them away, the problem is that if that. If without this process, if general revenue money comes, if chapter seventy comes in above our. Assumptions, it sits in the treasury and we don't have access to it unless we have do something at the fall town meeting. Generally, it'll roll over to the next year to free cash, what I'm saying is we wanna put that money. A, in our into use in our funds for OPEB and capital and B. Make the schools eligible for up to fifty thousand dollars of it to go into their funds and you and if you're gonna do that. In a meaningful way, you do that through this process, but it's not their money that we're taking away.
Wait a minute, I th- didn't we have a discussion last time that this money had to go to the schools, weren't you telling us?
There's two monies that we're talking about for the schools, one are known as the school's special revenue accounts. Those are revolving funds, those are the circuit breaker monies. Those are the grant monies. That money we have no control over. Chapter seventy is a different kind of money, comes on the cherry sheet directly to the town. Again, it goes right into the general fund, so there's two types of school related funding that we're talking about, one we have control over, the chapter seventy. The others we do not.
But you were you were concerned about money that had to go to the school, how how does that come into play with Mark? What Mark's saying?
They have an estimated budget of those school special revenues of two point nine million dollars. We are not touching that money in any which way, shape or form, that amount is remaining identical to what the school committee has proposed.
All right, but in but in your original proposal, Mark had nothing to do with that.
Right, not that two point nine million, it's got to do with this four point.
So so I guess I'm trying to reconcile the concern that you had last time to what.
Because Mark would, I think the last time he was referring to the school's special revenue or he was referring to a number of two point nine million. Which is the school's special revenue funds as opposed to the chapter seventy money, which is the four point.
I learned a lot this week too, Alex.
All right, okay, so so this is this is a little different from what you were saying last time.
It 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 uses that the chapter seventy money of four point five million or four point four nine million dollars.
All right, so the town would be making an agreement with the schools based on what they asked for in their budget. Or what their expectation is for the chapter seventy money, we'll say, we'll give you exactly what you asked for, but then.
No, not exactly, almost what you asked for.
Almost, but then anything over that, you know, would be used in our general fund.
Technically, the schools department hasn't really asked for anything out of chapter seventy money. They're basically asking for a budget that is funded through general taxation of which that chapter seventy money is a part of. So they haven't really asked for chapter seventy money because they know it's part of the it's part of the big pie, it's just one component of the big pie.
So, but this seems feasible that we could say this is what we can offer you and then. If 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 chapter seventy, they wouldn't be able to say, um, you're taking funds to belong to the school department.
No, they 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 would have.
So Tom, the downside of this, if you look to article, what I've showed is article C is. At the last meeting, I said, gee, for every dollar that comes in, it gets proportioned a percentage and Paul said, no, the department of revenue. Doesn't like that, they'd want numbers, so I split it into increments at seventy thousand dollar increments, why I did that? Because it kind of worked out well. The problem by doing that is if you go one dollar into the next increment, we're committing another seventy thousand. When we might have only gotten one dollar of additional aid, you following what I'm saying? And and I have never, I I still haven't figured out how to how to overcome that concern, I mean, you can make these in smaller, lots of different.
So in other words, we could well appropriate more than we take in.
Up to seventy nine, up to sixty-nine thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars, yeah.
Because you gotta do it in chunks.
Right, or you make the increments smaller, I mean, if we really thought this, we could make these three increments of fifty thousand dollars and not worry about that, I mean.
Well, well, there's always, as long as you're doing it in chunks, you're almost inevitably going to have a disparity.
Yeah, yeah, and and you know, all all you can do is try to. Try to minimize that, but again, the point is that at at some point, you know, the two components here is. You know, the school committee's putting some money at risk at the end of a of an increase in chapter seventy. We're putting a lot more money at risk, but we get it earlier in the increases in chapter seventy and we being the the general government would get them. Get it the money earlier, so if you look at the total at risk, it's, you know, it's a hundred and thirty-eight thousand plus fifty, it's a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. And yet only, you know, the the schools are essentially being guaranteed a hundred and thirty-eight thousand of that right off the top. They get that at the base level. You know, I you know, again, I don't know if this is the perfect answer, I don't know if it's an any any answer, but well.
See, to me, it's it's hard to to look at this until we account for that hundred thousand dollars in these add-ons.
Well, it's hard to look at the numbers, Alex, I agree with you, but conceptually, there's no doubt that there's a a a shortfall. Whether, you know, and and the shortfall is as a minimum, two hundred and eight thousand dollars as a minimum. And I say a shortfall, it's a shortfall between.
Two oh eight with the assumptions of the two twenty-nine budget, I mean, right, I mean, like. That's a stab at.
Right, I mean, we can cut line items from our budget and we can add line items to our budget. And we can cut capital expenditures and we can cut investments in OPEB, we can, you know, the budget's still fluid. But you gotta have some starting point somewhere and and like I said, I didn't see the select board coming in. Saying we're gonna cut here, cut here, cut here, because the general government budget, as I saw it, was a very bare bones budget with with very few. The only addition was a a change in staffing alignment at the police department, other than that, it was pretty bare bones budget, I don't think there was a.
Less than bare bones.
Right, I I don't think there was a whole lot of places we were gonna cut and yet each of us wanted to add and if you're gonna add, you gotta have a source for it. And and I'd rather use the hundred thousand dollars that we found is lower in. In in our health insurance premiums to add to the general government lines. Because I can understand that and and put my arms around it, but if we can only add thirty thousand dollars, what the heck, yeah, we put seventy thousand.
Yeah, but I mean, we, I mean, I guess. To me, this is a two oh, I mean, from the two twenty as of March second or third.
March third.
We had a two hundred and eight thousand issue, not a three oh eight, so.
But we also, if you recall, had much lower contributions to OPEB and capital.
Yeah, no, I understand, right.
So what would happen is we'd have to put, we'd we'd end up with far more of OPEB and cap- and capital at risk if you took those numbers. And I'm and and we'd actually be below last year's levels as a guaranteed funding level and I wanted to not do that. I didn't wanna drop below last year's levels of OPEB and capital.
Okay, but the the roll of the dice is really on what the chapter seventy uh funding is gonna be. I mean, cause that's just an estimate and.
Everything on the top line is an estimate, Tom, every one of our top line items is a is an estimate, so, you know. But we started with those numbers in October, November and now it's it's March and we're hearing. Better estimates from the state, you know, both for, you know, general cherry sheet numbers and. And and now we've got numbers for our motor vehicle excise tax for another period for this year, so we know a little bit more about. So all of those, you know, revenues look look a little bit better to me.
That, you know, that goes back to my thing, we're assuming that the town is whole and and we're only talking about the schools, what are you gonna do next year?
I have no clue, I worry about next year.
Yeah, I mean.
You're right.
Then now it's gonna be full funded next year, but the this the this program will be full funded next year. We're not gonna be playing the same game next year, we're just talking about a startup cost, after that, it becomes base funds. You know, and I I sent an email to Mark today and I applaud him for all of his work, he's due diligence is here, but. You know, if you take the words collectively that are being spoken in this room and two hundred and eight thousand dollar shortfall, shortfall is a shortfall. You got a program that you're trying to fund that is a discretionary program at this time in the in the state of Massachusetts. May be a very valuable program, still discretionary and you're being asked to fund it at the detriment of. Policies that we have put in place on this board for the long term wealth of our community, the long term care of our community. And we're willing to jeopardize OPEB funding and capital funding and even if we get it back, we've lost a year on the capital funding. That year, we won't get anything done this year with that money that's tied up on going to the schools, I told Mark in the email today, I said. To me, it spells override all the way, you're you've got an unfunded mandate that you're accepting. Why are we going to take money from policy, long range policy decisions that we've made? To fund something that we should be going to the taxpayers with and saying, look, if you want it, vote it in, if you don't, vote it down.
Why don't we do that for OPEB?
We can, is that what I said on your thing too, didn't I?
No, no, I mean, why not have the override for OPEB?
The same thing too, if you wanna take it to the public, take a warrant article and take it to the public, I agree. You can do that with capital too, we do that with capital.
I mean, cause I mean.
Let's wrap the whole thing, I I'll key right where you're at, let's don't change the subject and don't go off on me. This is a, you are you are considering, you haven't considered anything about OPEB, you're not worried about OPEB, you're not worried about capital. You only seem worried about how we're gonna fund the schools, I'm saying.
No, that's such.
Okay, but if, well, that's the the tactic comes back on this, but if you're going to do that. Then this is an additional need above and beyond, why are you gonna rob Peter to pay Paul?
Why would you? Who's Peter and who's Paul though, that's his that's his question, I think.
Robbing Peter is our capital program and our uh our OPEB, I mean, these are policies.
But you said one is discretionary, well, they're both discretionary.
OPEB's not discretionary.
Funding it is.
Nope, OPEB is, the actual money we're putting is, but OPEB itself is a liability that's non-discretionary.
But but there's nothing that says we have to allocate a certain amount.
You're right.
Well, I thought when we looked at bonding, that those things were, you know, really suggested by our bonding agents. That we needed to do, you know, they don't say you need to fund full day kindergarten, do they? They've never said that?
Well, but wait a minute, but.
That's different.
I mean, we have to understand, we are ahead of the curve on OPEB and we're way behind on the curve on. Uh on uh full day kindergarten.
No, we're not, we're not ahead of the curve on OPEB, you.
We are too.
You've heard the guys tell you what the liability is.
He said, no, no, we're headed compared to other towns. Compared to other towns, compared to other towns, we are, we would be, we would be the last one in Western Mass.
Like we're saying, we're not as bad as the other towns, okay?
Well, so so but we're we're, we know we're as.
How many uh?
We we know we're worse on kindergarten.
What what, based on what?
Because we're the only town in Western Mass that doesn't have universal kindergarten.
It's non, it's discretionary program, how many students are we talking about, do you know?
Well, what is a hundred and forty?
How many, how many, I think we've got some people running for the school board that are publicizing that. Uh we're jeopardizing the most at risk students in our community by not having full day kindergarten. How many students is that?
Well, we don't know exactly, but because we we have, you know, we haven't collected that kind of data, but what we know is that some people can't afford it.
No, I have collected that data, it's one student.
One student.
There's exactly one student, because I got it from schools.
That there's one student for what?
Student that is in half day kindergarten, which by programs in five oh four and with the uh uh educational program. Likely should be in full day, the only question we can't get is are your parents keeping them out because they don't want them involved in that much stress? We don't know that, but there's only one student.
That what?
One student is in half day program that is identified that should be in full day kindergarten.
So, but we, what we know though is that all the kids that are in half day kindergarten are getting a different education.
Well, I don't know that and you don't know that, you make you make a suggestive call, I'm sticking with the facts, I'm sticking with the fact, you're a lawyer, you like facts, I'm giving you facts.
The other thing is that you can't presume that the kids aren't getting schooling at home, I mean, you know, we look at. What the educational system offers and that's great, but then there are parents who are uh very competent teachers. And they want to teach their children.
Apply that to other grades, why why not have a half day eighth grade on the assumption that. On the, because why? Because it's a public education, right, and so the question then becomes is. Is full day kindergarten part of a public school education? Is it part of a public school education, that's the value judgment we have to make.
The law, the other one is not.
Right, no, but the we have to make a public, we have to make a judgment, is it part of a public school education?
Well, we're not making that judgment, we're only making a judgment of how are we going to fund a request, that's the only judgment call that we're going to make. Cause that's what this board is tasked with, we're not passed with running the schools or anything else, I'll be with you in a minute, Steve, we're tasked with. Uh finding out where we can get the money to possibly fill the requests or not fill the requests and I've come back to the base one, how do we fill the request? And I think that it is, it is an unfunded uh thing that's being given to us, it's non, it's discretionary in nature. And yet if we fund it, we are openly admitting to the public that we're going to go in and start to dismantle policies. That you participated in and I participated in along with these other board members for the long term uh growth of our community, stuff that we know. We honestly know that we need in place and we know right now that they're drastically underfunded. But we're telling, we're kicking the can down the road, now we're gonna back up and start stealing funds to fund. Something that should go to the town meeting for an override, why wouldn't you take it for an override?
We don't need an override.
Why wouldn't you, you're gonna tear into funds, you're going into funds that are set aside to do capital improvements in this community. Yes, they are, by policy, we're setting them aside and you're cutting policy on the funding.
But but they made a policy decision.
We are, we are the ones that set the budget.
Right, but those are two different policy decisions.
You're taking money from a from a policy. You're taking money from a, from a policy decision this board made, long, long term growth of our community and putting it off overrun to a gamble. And I say, why are you doing that?
On a gamble.
If if the kindergarten program is that important, it will pass at a town vote as a whiz.
No, so here.
And it should be an override.
So here, here's, here's a part of my rationale, Richard. OPEB liability, you don't know what impact that's gonna have.
Well, we do know the impacts of that. We've got the, we have to.
No, no, no. Here, can I finish?
Alex, you've got, you've got studies that are given to you every year.
Can I finish? I, I, here's the thing. We have an OPEB uh liability that stretches out over twenty years, right?
Right, thirty something million dollars.
Okay, and what if, so and there are two sides of that equation. One is costs and one is funding. We have no ability to affect costs.
Right.
Pretty much.
Pretty much.
All we can do is start shoveling money at the problem.
You got it.
Right.
And we put out a million right now.
So, the problem gets to be, all of the policy decisions about healthcare are made at the federal level and the state level.
Correct.
And in fact, those policy decisions can overwhelm easily anything that we do on the funding end.
Absolutely.
And that is why when I asked the auditor, is there a material difference between zero and the OPEB contribution that we were making? He said, no.
That was his, that was his opinion.
Basic, basic, basically, well, he's a professional and and he.
That was his opinion.
Okay, so and and I haven't heard in a contrary opinion from somebody as, from somebody as.
Well, Moody seemed, Moody gave us a contrary opinion when we had the last conference call. He shared with the board three times. The guys just don't believe what you heard.
Alright, so, so. So, Richard, so my point is that we could be just spitting into the ocean. With OPEB.
What's, what is your point?
So, I'm getting to, so in other words, I'm being asked to weigh something that has a very uncertain benefit.
No, you're not. You're not being asked to weigh uncertain benefits.
Can I finish my sentence? That's an uncertain benefit, whereas kindergarten has a proven benefit.
Right.
An undoubted benefit. The return on dollars that you've heard on early education is at least seven to one.
Well, that's, that's what people are saying. I can't valid validate that. I have.
Well, okay, if you don't believe that, well, well, the children's.
Well, you don't believe the OPEB studies. I believe your studies.
Well, no, Children's Defense Fund.
Well, what I would think that though.
Are you more of an expert than the Children's Defense Fund?
Get it back down to the question. How are you gonna fund it? That is the only question before this board. Marcus, Marcus got a system where we're gonna raid our funds, take a gamble, throw the dice and hope we get the money back. And I'm saying, I'm not prepared to support that because that's going contrary to policies that you and I and Tom and Mark and Marie and other boards have set for the long term growth of this community.
I did, I did not vote for the OPEB.
Fine, and you did not vote for it, but we did.
Because I foresaw this day.
That's fine, but we had reasonable minds to say, this is a need that we're being told that we need to plan for. Now, spitting in the ocean, whatever it is, I don't care what you call it, but we're right now, we spend over a million dollars a year on this right now and it's growing every year. And you know as well as I do, it's gonna continue. And there is a possibility of legislative change which will reduce that. There is not, there is a, there's not even a remote possibility that the that the town is suddenly, Boston's suddenly gonna come down and say, you know, Long Meadow, we realize that you just haven't taken care of all your infrastructure for fifty years and here, we'll give you fifty million dollars and bail you out. That's not gonna happen and you know it's not gonna happen. There's no way it's gonna happen.
I'd also say that a seven to one return for investment in in early education or preschool and kindergarten is not on kids from our community. Those are from kids in communities that are struggling economic, or struggling, yeah, struggling economically, but also struggling in terms of social class. I mean, I just know that this research.
So, so everybody in, so everybody in Long Meadow is high class? Is that what you're saying?
I'm saying that those statistics are based on uh populations that really don't equal our population. That's right. I'm saying that our children have a lot more opportunities in life and that you're not getting a seven dollar return per dollar on on our children cuz our children are, have a lot of opportunities. When you look at children that are in a uh a very difficult uh situation, they're growing up in single parent hu- family homes with economic challenges.
So that doesn't happen in Long Meadow?
Larger numbers of disabilities. I would say that that's not a characteristic that I would describe Long Meadow, no.
Oh, Stephen, you had some.
We don't have any single parents in Long Meadow?
Yeah, you do.
I would not say.
Alright, somebody note that.
Meet the same criteria.
So, um, I'd like to maybe change gears for ju- if I could.
Be slow.
For just a minute. It may grind, the gears may grind a little bit as I'm trying to change them, but um you know, I I I guess what I would say is, I'd ask, I mean, I think, um, you know, we can talk all night and then we could talk all night about anything, but we could talk all night about um what's the value of the mandate for um.
OPEB, capital.
Whatever, um, funding, fully funding the crossing guard program, you name it. What's the value of that versus the value of another program act decision like, for example, um a tuition free kindergarten? Um, and that's really what we're here to do. As I, as I said when I presented the budget at the joint meeting, the two words were um balance and obligation. And so I, in principle, free full day kindergarten, fully funding kindergarten or having no tuition for kindergarten is no more of an obligation at this time than OPEB really because the state has not yet mandated it. And I think, as Richard would say, as Richard suggests, the data may show, may show, I've not reviewed it firsthand. But the data may show that the tuition may really not be a barrier to full day kindergarten for any of the kindergarten age children. And that's, I think, if that, if we're gonna, what's the obligation? It's, are we able, to to go to your point, Alex, which I actually agree with, is a, is full day kindergarten public education? You know, and does it have to be free to be considered public? Well, the the policy decision by past generations of town of Long Meadow municipal and school leaders has been, that tuition's okay. So, if we're making that transition, what's that cost? Is it an obligation? That's where we're, you know, when Paul and I.
Well, do you think it's part of a public school education?
Do I think it's part of a public school education? I, I, I think that the benefits of a full day education, of a full day kindergarten have been made clear to me by the superintendent in the school committee. I, I, I've said it all the way along. I've been.
No, no, but is it part of a public school education?
I guess. I don't know if I'm, I don't know.
It's not mandatory.
It's not, it's not a mandatory part of a public education. I get, yeah, I mean, it's, it's not a mandate today is all I'm suggesting, but it is a part of a public education, sure. And and I the budget that I presented.
And I assume any of us here, if we had children, we would want our kids to be able to go to full day kindergarten.
Sure. Honestly, I I would, I'd pay.
Right, right.
If my, I mean, I, my kids.
And if we couldn't afford it, we'd still want our kids to go there.
We still want our kids to, so.
Because it wouldn't be fair for our kids to get something less than other kids.
I, I was just, I swear.
But not everybody actually believes that. I mean, i- if that was true, we would have every student in our town enrolled in kindergarten half day, and they're not.
So, to get, to get, just cuz I wasn't really, I didn't wanna, I'm not trying to weigh in on the, I'll take a side, if you will, on the, on the pu- kindergarten thing. I was just trying to put some context into the up or down choices that the board is going to have to make to present a balanced budget to town meeting. Mark has taken um an attempt at doing that. I I guess one of the things I've heard from the schools, uh and I say, some talk um about perhaps compromising and trying to meet in the middle, if you will, or trying to to go through the same exercise that does, that Mark and this board are doing right now. They may be on the other side of that wall having virtually the same conversation we're having right now.
Do you have a big cup?
Yeah, I, I, I do, I could.
Yeah.
Um, we could probably livestream it.
Good.
So, we could, we could watch it in real time.
Should've been thinking we could.
Um, so, the the reason, the point is, I guess, Mark, and this is sort of a a statement slash question, if the schools in their continued discussion about the budget that they said they may revisit as our, after our joint meeting where we presented all our information, I think there was a talk, a lot of talk about, we wanna continue to work together, right? If they all of a sudden decided they were gonna come up with additional, as I come up with, they were gonna modify their budget to reduce their funding request. Um, you know, where would that play into the proposal? So, say, say they, they're like, okay, we had thirty three million three hundred something. Yeah, so, we're lowering our general fund request one hundred thousand dollars hypothetically speaking. What does that do to your sheet?
To the extent that there's still a shortfall, we might adjust the numbers a little bit, but we'd still put some money at risk. I don't think that that shortfall would all be, uh, you know, come back. Let's see, I wanna make sure I'm saying, that, you know, if there's still a shortfall, it wouldn't all be assigned still to the schools, wouldn't all still be assigned to to the general government side. I'd still wanna distribute it. You know, what I came, you know, came back with is we're off by, I keep using this number. It's actually a hundred and eighty eight thousand four fourteen and I told them I gotta take fifty because I just, it's my paper, I could say anything I want to. So if they came up with a hundred thousand dollars, we're still off by eighty eight thousand four fourteen. I'd take the eighty eight thousand and try to apportion it. Still trying to reach that compromise. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, no, I I think so. It it just, it it helps close the margin though. So you're saying, if they, you're saying, under your scenario, if they said a hundred and eighty eight, we've seen the light, a hundred and eighty eight, then we're good to go.
Except that.
Uh, but for the cuts in programs and everything else.
Correct.
Based on the budget that 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 I presented, which I don't think anybody.
But we haven't even decide, but you, that's assuming that we're playing with a hundred, an extra hundred, right?
I'm, I'm just, I'm engaging a little bit scenario building, hypothetical scenario building is all I was doing there. I wanted to better understand.
When, when are we gonna find out about the chapter seventy funding, like the actual number?
After the state.
It needs to go through a process where the the house votes on the governor's budget, they make their amendment, that is gonna go to the senate, and the senate and the house are gonna get together in a joint committee. Late June, early uh, late June, early July has been the historical timeframe.
And and that's why we have to pass a quote unquote balanced budget based on assumptions. And we make those assumptions every year. And and every year, I I would like to say without fail, our assumptions aren't exact. They're usually very close and even this year they'd be close. But when you're trying to find one percent or a half a percent, you know, I mean, we could, we could just unilaterally change the assumptions. Remember, we have not, anybody gone back to, you know, to Paul and said, why did you put this down for for motor vehicle excise? I mean, you gave us all the numbers and they're all in our, our budget document you gave us. But we could argue with those assumptions just as much as we argue with the expenditures if we chose to. I don't think there'd be a lot of value to doing it, but.
And I, and I still think, I came back, but I asked Mark, what are you gonna do next year? Cuz every, all this discussion is just about this year. But then it becomes a permanent liability.
So what becomes a permanent liability?
If we fund full day kindergarten. It's there next year. It's also gonna be funded next year.
They, according to the school committee, they get additional revenue from the state for not having a tuition, which is one of the reasons why.
This is the hundred thousand.
But that, that's the hundred thousand dollars I'm taking one time out of, out of free cash or something.
Right, but but either way, the gap thing, now a hundred thousand.
Right, the gap next year's less.
The gap, well, I, I mean, not really because it's three hundred eighty three thousand for tuition in one year. It's still gonna be the 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 value of the tuition revenue is still three hundred, whatever it was, three hundred thousand, I'll call it three hundred thousand. That's the value of that revenue. That's disappeared forever. So, next year, in theory, and not in theory, but next year, we're gonna be to some extent potentially in a similar position um because of, but you'd hope that new growth, an additional two and a half percent of levy capacity, even though I don't think anybody wants to use it all, could make it a little bit easier next year. It's that one time buy in, essentially that one time upfront cost.
But it's a, it's a continuing cost.
Yeah, oh yeah, it's, it's definitely a continuing cost.
This is an expansion of a base program and that's why, that's why I said, normally if you go expansion of a base program, instead of tearing, tearing apart your budget, you would go for an override and explain to the voters.
Yeah, and and I think that the argument could, and and I, I think I heard the argument from the school committee or the superintendent during the budget presentation was that it is not the expansion of a prog- of a program. They have full day kindergarten today. It is really, it is really.
Of the financial liability.
Correct. It it was the elimination of a revenue stream.
Right.
To the town or to the, I mean, the the overall town organizations, town and schools combined. Um, so, while in theory it's not the expansion of a program, it it does, it is the expansion of uh, it is a reduction in the revenue the town currently enjoys.
Right, and and that's, that's the question. I just wanted to make sure the board's aware. This is a one year fix. And the other one's a mo- is a, a permanent fix.
Richard, my fear is that if not next year, the following year, the state will mandate full day kindergarten.
Sure.
In which case, we will not have the luxury of, pardon the expression, working a deal and phasing it in. And it will all fall on the general government side or or an override to make it happen.
It'll be an override.
I just don't believe, well, I just don't believe the people in town have the stomach for an override.
Well, they better be prepared because it's coming.
If it's mandated.
I mean, if you're, you're starting to tear apart programs that we've set up for the long term for our, I, guys, this is, this is crazy, crazy economics.
But, Richard, I know you don't, I know you don't like to hear this, but.
We're stealing money out of the savings account to buy candy bars.
There are people in town who would rather defer OPEB and rather defer capital than raise their taxes.
Then let them make the decision at the doggone town meeting, the way our government was set up to do. Why are we trying to do that?
And and they can do that with the current proposals.
You're working, we're working against ourselves. That's what I don't understand.
No, 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 they can do that easily at the current proposals and just.
But you, we are working against ourselves. We are going against our own policies. And that's fine.
But I mean, tho- those are not written in blood anywhere.
No, there, nothing's written in blood, Alex, but you know, we.
It's a goal, as Marie has said.
You were elected to represent the entire community along with me. And we are supposed to have enough wisdom to look into the future and plan. Because no one else is doing it. We do it or it doesn't get done.
Okay. I agree with you.
This is fine.
So, so, so why are we pushing the DPW facility without knowing how we're gonna do, fund the senior center and the s- middle schools?
Because it should've been replaced in nineteen eighty eight and the town didn't do it. That's exactly why it's being done.
So, and we're, so that justifies not having a plan?
You can't throw the, the phony rhetoric on the table anymore. That should've been replaced in nineteen eighty eight and it wasn't done. You know the history. I know the history.
So that's an absolute priority.
You've seen the facility, Alex. I personally am getting to the point, I wouldn't care if they do anything. But the fact is, I know it has to be done. We deferred it for twenty seven years. How can you stand before this town and tell them that that's prudent management being put forth by this select board when that board back in ninety eight or eighty eight walked away with it, walked away from that issue after taking it to the town meeting one time? Walked away and it never surfaced again for twenty seven years. What kind of management is that? What kind of foresight? We don't need elected boards to put that kind of guidance. Anybody could stumble into that. But yet, we'll pick up an issue that just came up yesterday and treat the holy grail and we're gonna fund it. We got many issues. We, you could, you wouldn't know what to do with the list if I gave you a list of all the needs in this community. You, you'd be, you'd be fro- you'd be frozen solid.
I would, I would love to. I would, I would love to put all those things on the table together and prioritize.
You'd, you'd be frozen solid.
But the prioritization exercise took place and the select board.
Wait a minute, as between DPW, middle schools, uh, senior center, uh, culverts, roads, that hasn't taken place.
Yeah. Annually, when they set the capital, annually, when they set the capital plan and they vote on the multitude of things in front of them, certain things get funded and certain things don't.
But we haven't, we haven't considered those particular things.
The DPW. And and when they, when it's been presented to town meeting, our legislative branch, town meeting, has affirmed the need for a new DPW by, by twice voting to give it funding every year. I think that, I think the community.
But that was, we, we never, but they, they were never asked to prioritize DPW versus anything else.
Right, because the select board, um, in creation of the warrant had made those priorities, which is what the select board has done. And that's part of the select board's job is to make the priorities and put them on the warrant.
So you think, so you think we have implicitly by putting those studies on the warrant that we have prioritized DPW over all else?
The select board made a.
Because I don't think that was ever the conversation we had.
But that is the net effect of the votes that were taken. And the conversa- and the DPW did have a conversation, like I said, I don't know that you were on the board at the time, but it was, the consensus was, um, in fact, I think in, I think if you go back to the uh advertising materials for the initial town manager search. And it said, you know, that the, one of the town, the towns, well, it's either one of or the town's top priority is a new DPW facility. That certainly was the case when I was hired. So, the select board collectively has said for several years that the replacement of DPW was its top priority for infrastructure work.
Really? It, it, well, I'll tell you, that's news to the town. I mean, if we've already made the decision that it's, that it's more important than the senior center and the middle schools, I've never heard it, I've never heard anybody say that.
I thought it had been said, I thought the, the, in fact, when the high school was approved, there was a lot, the discussion was, and the next thing we're gonna do, our highest priority, is the DPW.
I know, there's discussion, but I mean, did, did we ever take a vote? Did, did we ever have a public forum and people gave their input and then we, when the issue was joined, we or anybody else voted that this was number one, this was number two, and this was number three?
I think the select board actually did vote. I'm not sure that was based on a. The select board actually did vote, I'm not sure that was based on a public forum. The select board instructed the town manager, even before Stephen was here, that that was our next priority. As, as a select board, we did it through our, through our, 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 our goal-setting process and our, and a bunch of different things.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, but, but we haven't figured out how to fund any, any of this.
That's, that's what the process is though, that's the process we're engaged in, you figure out what, you figure out how much it's gonna cost.
And so we're gonna do, and we're gonna do these things one at a time. And we're gonna do things one at a time, and whatever comes across the door first gets the advantage. Okay, alright.
It's been like that for, yeah, and, and-
Alright, so now, now we know.
We have figured out how we're gonna fund it, cause the only way we fund things is through the pockets of the residents, and we either tax it, put taxes, or we, or we bond it and add it to the taxes. But in one way or the other, it comes through property taxes, cause I don't know, money falling from the sky.
Right.
So, you know, anyway.
So, as Mark was saying, we need to move on into the budget, we gotta start-
Yeah, I mean, we've got a Thursday night budget hearing, correct? And, and I think we'd like to know what we're pre- presenting to the residents of town for a budget. And, and so, my take is, my suggestion is, we look at a budget in time, and, and it might as well be the, the March third budget, but I'll take any budget that, that anybody wants to. And we look at general government part of the budget, not the balancing of the budget with the schools and not look at OPEB and not look at capital expenditures yet, but look at the general government expenditures and make sure that we have agreed as a body of five, and we'll verify this when Marie is in here Wednesday, of what we wanna show up in the general government portion of this budget. We will then agree, I'd like to see us then agree, on what we're gonna expend for capital dollar amount, and then the projects will fall from that, and what we're then gonna spend on, in, into any other funds such as OPEB, and what we're gonna, you know, do that, and, and, and then how much goes into the schools. And once we do, but first, we've gotta decide what we'd like to see appropriated for the general government. And, you know, Mr. Crane has prepared a budget, it's titled March third, right? The difference between that and the February twenty-ninth, in my understanding, was in terms of general government expenditure, Stephen, was the addition of eleven thousand seven hundred dollars for, for the Bliss tennis courts, is that correct? There was no, there were no other changes to the general govern-
One of the changes, a hundred thousand dollar reduction to health insurance.
Yeah, right.
Excuse me, that's correct, there's a hundred thousand dollars reduction to health insurance. And so the question is, you know, we've got a list of other peo- what other people would like to see in there, and I'd like to see if we can capture that list and dollar amounts, see if we can agree on whether or not to add those dollar amounts without, without a, having to answer the question of how are we gonna pay for them yet? Just, are they a priority to the five people on the select board, en- enough to put them into our expenditure list?
Let's rock.
Okay, so-
You're talking additions now, right?
We're, we're talking additions, and I'm trying to pull up, I'm gonna, I'm gonna speak for Marie because she's not here to speak for herself. And I will tell you, I may not agree, but I'm gonna nevertheless list her-
You, you have her list?
Put down her list. So, as soon as this opens up.
I have it here, Mark, you can go on there.
I got it.
You're a hard copy, I know you don't like hard copies, but there is one.
Well, one of the things that Marie has here is an article offering two choices, pilot program for chairs and umbrellas at the pools, and a, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for free all-day kindergarten, or a hundred and fifty thousand for OPEB, now, those are not general government, the, the latter is not general government, I guess she's looking to add ten thousand dollars to the Parks and Recreation list to purchase chairs and umbrellas, I'm gonna-
Now, hold on, you're not reading it right, it's ten thousand for chairs and umbrellas, or the breakfast program.
Or pilot breakfast.
See, she, this is, this is why she's talking about participatory budgeting.
So I, I guess she just wants ten thousand dollars put in there in the, the COA to make up their mind which they felt was the best, go ahead.
No, no, I think she's, he's asked, what she's talking about, cause I've, I've talked with her before about this participatory budgeting, is the town meeting debates it and decides which one they prefer.
That's fine.
I'm just gonna add, we, with the ten thousand dollar investment for chairs and umbrellas for the, uh, the swimming pool, um, that money could easily go out of the Parks and Rec revolving fund, since they're gonna collect the fees on it. So it doesn't really need to be added to the general fund budget.
Okay, so you're taking that one off the table, I assume? Now, would we, uh-
But not for the, but not for the pilot breakfast program at the adult center?
No, not for the pilot, just mentioning the, the ten thousand for the umbrellas and chairs.
So let's list this, ten thousand dollars for pilot breakfast program.
Okay.
Okay.
Next, Mr. Gold.
Okay.
So what are we doing, we're just listing?
I'm just listing them right now, okay, Alex? Okay, uh, she, this is just, recreate separate line for the tree planting, and that's just procedural, that, no, there was no additional funding in there. She had something to do for the health insurance trust fund, but that's no additional funding. Used a hundred and twenty-five thousand health insurance savings and free cash to fund an innovative fund, so she's looking to add an innovation fund. Field fund.
Actually, are we on three here?
I was on four, I've already moved past three.
Wait a minute, but, actually, I didn't quite understand that, so we have two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in a health insurance trust fund?
It's not our money.
It, it, it's, it's some of the town's money, and it's also the employees' and retirees' money.
Okay, and this is to, what, what effect would that have? I mean, the way I understood what she was talking about, that would be a way to offset the increase from Skidnack Valley, but I don't know if that's what-
Historically, or what we do now, is we offset, we have in over the last couple of years, that amount of money, that fund balance is used to offset the scanning guy rates by one percent per year. We could wipe it all out by using probably an amount of three percent um, to reduce the cost, not only to the town, but also to the retiree and to the employee. So, we would not get the full benefit of reaping two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we would get the reaping maybe of a hundred and twenty out of that, a hundred and thirty.
And how much do we have in the fund, is it two?
It, it, right now, it, it's projected to be, at the end of this fiscal year, around two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But I, I looked at the numbers, we could probably afford a three percent subsidy, as opposed to a two perc- uh, I'm sorry, as opposed to a one percent subsidy. A one percent subsidy costs roughly sixty-five thousand dollars.
Yeah.
So we could afford a three percent, it would cost us like a hundred and ninety-five thousand, we'd come out of the trust, but the town would only benefit of that about a hundred and twenty, and the, and, and the, the employees and the retirees would benefit the other seventy-five.
As opposed to using a one percent a year, and the town gets the benefit?
No, no, every, everybody get, gets the benefit with the one percent.
But, but that's a side discussion, that, that wasn't, it's not pertinent to the budget at this point.
It isn't?
Well, it, it's spending a two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to save eighty-five thousand.
But that was not Marie's recommendation.
No, it's one ninety-five to save one twenty, right? Isn't that what you just said?
You would have to earmark one hundred and ninety-five, uh, for the town to save about a hundred and twenty.
So that would, so, in other words, the, it would be the same as if Skidnack Valley charges a hundred and twenty less?
Yeah, if Skidnack Valley's rates were set, so it would be a hundred and twenty in total less.
So that would free up a hundred and twenty thousand from our budget.
Well, she's using the hundred and, hundred and twenty-five of that next line down.
But, but why are we gonna drain that, I, I mean, on the one hand, and I don't wanna put words in Marie's, you know, mouth here, cause she's not here, but, you know, she, she pretty well said, what did you folks do, stretch, stripping that last fund entirely, you shouldn't have done it, and now we're gonna say, let's strip the fund we've got, I mean, you can't have it both ways.
I, I, I think I get her logic, because she was saying, had we not stripped it, then we could've softened the blow this year. So she's kind of trying to soften the blow this year to the extent we can. I mean, I'm not necess- necessarily endorsing, I, I'm just, I mean, I think that would be the logic of it.
Let's still burn down to her recommendations, we're, we're getting side discussions going, we're not making progress.
Right.
Well, but it, it, well, it helps us understand it.
I know, it, it helps us not get anything done at this point, too. You're, you're gonna, you're gonna list four? She had a hundred and twenty-five thousand savings from the health insurance trusts, making up this, uh, innovation fund?
I, I just put it at innovation fund.
But it's also a field fund, an energy fund, ener- see, she doesn't specify how that money would be allocated.
Well, some of it's coming from the school committee agrees to put up, put their parking fees in the fund.
No, I understand that, but, I mean, like, how much does the innovation fund, uh, what does the field fund get, what does the energy fund get?
It's non, non-defined, she just, she just puts pieces.
Right, so, so that's-
I don't think it's defined enough to under- to put down a dollar amount.
Right, right, okay.
I don't think it is either.
Number five. New s- school board, select board policy, school committee select board policy. It's got nothing to do with the budget.
The budget.
Policy, sidewalk money can be used for repairs as well, that's got nothing to do with the budget.
Well, that, that is the decisions already been made, and Stephen's running with that.
Joint policy to decrease benefit of positions, nothing to do with the budget. Agreement on joint report on unemployment expenses with budget projections, that's got nothing to do with the budget.
And number nine has nothing to do with the budget.
Nine has nothing to do with the budget, begin discussions on schools sharing iPads.
So there is possibility that two of these that she has, number four with further definition.
Right.
So one would be the pilot breakfast program, the other would be-
That's a, that's a plus.
This fund, this taking the health insurance money to fund other funds.
And the other one would be the innovation fund.
Well, but it's an, well, but she's got a number of funds. See, it's not just the innovation.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not made-
But that's creating funds, but she didn't have-
Right, but she didn't allocate it, that's, right, we would have to-
It's not budgeted, it's not-
We would have to refine that.
Right, okay. My only addition be, i- i- is, I think if we're assuming that Bliss tennis courts are, are already in there, I'm gonna add thirty-five thousand dollars for a, a second police vehicle.
Sir, what was that?
Thirty-five thousand dollars plus for a second police vehicle. That's it.
Okay.
Richard?
I have no additions.
Any deletions?
We, we had talked about restoring money for the, for mailings, as opposed to three, okay.
Well, no, I, I, that'll come up though, Paul.
Okay.
Yeah, and, you know, we don't-
Why don't we add that in there though?
We can put it in right now, well, you, you just stripped it, what is it, two thousand?
It, it's, it's a two thousand dollar.
This is quarterly mailings.
Right.
It's just one mailing, isn't it?
It's one, it's one mailing, uh-
So it's two thousand dollars?
It's, it's two thousand dollars that was taken out. Um, they will get two separate estimated mailings as opposed to two bills and one mailing.
Okay, I appreciate you mentioning Paul, so we didn't miss it. Is anything else you guys can think of we missed so far?
The only other thing that I had was the, I had taken out money for the, um, voter's maintenance, the voting machine maintenance. And because it was a, a, a heavy year with voter, um, with the state primary and the, and the presidential, that Kathy did ask for that money to be put back in. It's another two thousand dollar hit.
And they got brand-new machines now, too.
They have, they have brand-new machines, but they still have to be programmed and things of that, and that, and that nature, because the, the number of elections we're gonna have, she needs the money.
So voter machine programming is two thousand dollars.
Yeah, right, it's two, another two.
Let's call it programming rather than maintenance, so it sounds better.
Okay, Tom?
Tom?
All right, well, I put together a list, um-
Do you have any dollar items, though?
Well, this is, what I've done is I've put together a list of, of ideas, and then uh, I would need help to figure out some dollar items.
Well, you have fully funded sidewalks, okay, and that's, that, but that's capital, not operating budget.
There's a component of sidewalks in the operating budget, but it's a small amount.
Well, we're gonna talk about capital separately though, Alex.
I got you.
All right, so, so what I put together, um, you know, after reading Marie's list and, and her encouraging us to put together ideas about what we should spend money on, I thought, well, if I could spend money on things, these would be the kinds of things I would wanna spend money on, and, and the first thing is to fully fund sidewalk repair, because I think we have a community that uses a lot of sidewalks, and so. Uh, the next thing would be to begin to add-
What, what do you mean by fully funded sidewalk, you mean to fix them all?
Well, I mean, whatever our-
It's four hundred thousand dollars was the request, and four hundred thousand dollars was the recommendation. The need is about four million dollars.
Right.
I, I don't quite, hold on, I wanna clarify though.
Yeah.
Sidewalk replacement is the capital item, generally speaking. Now, sidewalk repair, fifty thousand was requested for sidewalk repair, I think we put in fifteen.
Right, but I also had the conversation with them last Wednesday about if the capital money could be used for shorter lengths of slab repair, and their answer was yes.
Right.
So, in essence, that almost does take care of what Tom wants, unless we're gonna put more money in capital, so make sure there's-
Okay.
I mean, if you look at their, if you look at the four hundred thousand, plus the fifty, and look at four fifty as the fully funded amount, that's one way to look at it. Um, right now, it's only, I don't know what the capital, I, I don't remember what doctor-
Four forty.
So four forty plus another fifteen.
Yeah, and the fifteen really is your maintenance fund, that's for putting out the coal patch or something remote.
Well, cutting out and doing slabs here and there.
But you can still do that with the-
We can still do the capital.
Yeah, the cap-
I mean, there's, you buy a certain amount of linear feet of sidewalk per year, so I, I don't, I mean, fully funding is, Mark's right, it's to fully, to fully fund the need is beyond our reach right now.
Okay, well-
Yeah, you're really more dealing capacity.
What's that?
Budget, so it sounds like we'll be able to, uh, address that issue appropriately for this year, so that's good. Uh, the next thing is, I, I thought we should begin to add bike lanes to all areas of streets that are main transportation venues in town, especially roads leading to the main shopping area. And I don't know what a, a cost for that, something like that would be. And I'm not, I know that there are, uh, specific textures you can use, and I know they, when we went to the, um, conference, they showed all these different, uh, things you can do, but I'm just saying, just lines, can we just, it would be nice if we could begin that process to just paint on some, some bike lanes, um. The next thing, I guess, would be-
But is there a dollar amount though, Tom, I mean, that's the point, is there?
Well, that's what I am, yeah, I mean, this is my first year, so.
You, you need that.
I would need that from, from folks from DPW probably, to figure out what would be a, uh, a line item if we looked at, um, you know, Route Five, um, Converse Street, Bliss, Williams, and perhaps, you know.
The other thing I'll say, the presentation was given before you were on the board, even if we had unlimited sums to do this, a bike lane, what constitutes a bike lane is set by federal highway and state, and state, but really it's a pass through by federal highway in terms of width, and you meet them on both sides of the road, and there are a lot of roads that don't have the curb-to-curb width to accommodate the bike lane, I think Long Island Street is, in most locations is probably one of them. Laurel is one of the few that does, and include the, on-street parking. But when you cross Laurel only in between Williams and, um, Converse, and you go north of Converse, it narrows, and when you go south, down the Shaker, it narrows as well. So that's one where we can certainly find an estimate to do where appropriate, but when we looked at, we, cause DPW did an analysis, and I think you were on the board, there really weren't many places where you could really deploy, um, regulatory compliant bike lanes. Now, every, every road has shared the road, and we've talked about adding signage, and certainly as part of the complete streets by law, we are gonna be doing that going forward. Uh, but it's, it's bigger than just the paint, it's the, 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 uh, space.
But there are places that we could do it, I mean, that are compliant, right?
And, not a lot of the main roads, but yeah, there are, I'm sure we could.
I mean, and I guess maybe that's kinda your point, Tom, right, where, where we have the space, right?
Right, that where we could begin to do it, um, we should start, cause I know with our complete streets, we, we'll eventually get to it, but I, I think it-
All right, great idea, let's move on, we're trying to do budget.
Okay, all right.
Play tough guy here while Richard's out.
The next thing is that, um, I feel it would be important that when the town repairs a sewer line that involves digging up a section of pipe, any homes attached should be contacted regarding the history of sewage backup into the residents or business.
Is that a budget item though, Tom?
If objections are found to be in the tree belt or connection to the main line, the town should offer to replace the broken area pipe if the owner is willing to pay for the cost of the pipe. When the town has a becco at the site, this kind of prayer, uh, repair is not a burden to the town, it would save the owner several thousand dollars. Well, I, I would just see that it would be extra time for DPW, um-
But it's not a line item in the budget.
Well, I don't know.
It's, it's definitely not a line item.
Fund thing for sure, and that's a, a substantial cost.
And not to mention liability to town, but it's not a budget item.
It would be, it would be, truth be told, the town has a policy of not doing that, what you really wanna do is, is promote a policy initiative to change that.
Policy initiative, all right, because I just think that, um, you, you know, other towns do that, you know, it's, it's, um, to replace, you know, if it's only like within ten feet of the, uh, of the sewer line, in the tree belt, you know, it would, uh, make a lot of people's lives e- easier. Cause we have a lot of old trees that are in the, in, affecting sewer lines, and people have to- And people have to get those, a rooter, router in there, and I know that's an expense to the town, have someone come in and, and do that, uh, at least a couple of times a year for some homes.
Okay, let's move on.
All right.
Ten o'clock, we got four, fifteen minutes, we got a whole budget.
Okay, well, um, the town should place electric generating solar panels.
Capital project.
On a structure that would serve as a dry area for our local farmer's market on rainy days.
Propose that as a capital project, it's not a budget line item.
All right. The next is the, this is not gonna cost us anything. The town should have a designated volunteer coordinator that can link the needs of the town with the skills of individuals who are willing to volunteer. This will be important as the number of retired individuals in our town increases in the next few years.
Steven?
Way ahead of you, Tom.
You already got a volunteer coordinator.
We have a full-time position, outreach coordinator.
Okay, and who's that, what's that person's name?
Michael Squindell.
Is that the person at the COA?
He's the social worker, okay.
Is that what you had in mind, Tom? Somebody at the COA or?
Well, I, I don't, I think that they could, I'm talking about town, townwide.
Well, we have an abatement program as well that does that on a similar scale. We have several different programs that do that kind of thing.
So, then if you have several programs, you may have one.
We don't have, we don't have a volunteer czar, no.
Who was czar, that's, I guess I'm looking for.
But the town does have a volunteer coordinator.
But not a czar.
But not a czar.
So I'm not one person, so.
But I, I do think the needs are adequately met in that, in terms of people who want, people who wanna volunteer, um, usually get steered into a good opportunity to volunteer.
All right.
But we could talk about that more, we, we, we certainly talk about that more. I don't know, I, I don't know if I could figure that out between Thursday night, between now and Thursday night.
All right.
There's not a rush on that.
Okay.
Okay, um, the other thing I put together is that we should plan senior housing that ranges from affordable to high-end luxury condominiums that would be built adjacent to the new, the site of the new senior center and be built as tall as our fire equipment can handle. Uh, the view from Turner Park takes in Wilmerham Mountains in one direction, downtown Springfield another. Once you get above tree level, uh, going vertical would reduce the footprint of the project and impact to the forested area at, at the park.
Again, not a budget line item, a capital project, probably development that the town would have to decide we wanted to get into development.
And, um, well, cause as we work.
That would be in the form of a, um, an initiative or a directive to, um, pull together a, engage in a master planning effort for, for Turner Park if that's the desired site.
Yeah, Stephen, I'm moving things along here. Richard gave me power of attorney here, go ahead.
All right, uh, the next would be that the, uh, uh, the school department or the town recreation should build a indoor climbing wall and open it up at night.
Capital planning project, not, not a town operating budget.
We view, well.
All you gotta do is, is get to the town engineers in the school department, submit it next year to the capital plan.
Okay.
Community Preservation Act, cause that's recreation.
Yeah.
You're right.
This would be a good community preservation.
Community preservation, all right.
I could even get behind this one.
All right, and then, uh.
Even you.
Even me.
Just two, two, well, two more things. We should adopt a policy like the one in Wilmerham that would allow residents to own up to six chickens for personal consumption of eggs and meat. And I guess that would just be something that'd have to, go in front of town meeting, is that?
Bylaw change.
Yeah.
Bylaw change.
Propose the bylaw change.
Okay.
Where do we, where do you want the hate mail sent to?
Uh, what is your address? No, uh, and then I, I guess the other thing would be that we need to put adult individuals with disabilities on the same level of priority as children with disabilities that are serviced by our town's school. And so I think we should have, uh, any ADA funding, um, that's required for town buildings to, to be put on the, on the, on the, uh, you know, on board. I mean, I, I.
Put in the capital plan.
Yeah, that's capital.
That, okay.
We've done a lot of ADA compliance stuff and there's probably more to go, get it into the capital plan.
Well, actually, we're, I mean, the issue's kind of joined with the library thing, right? I mean, we, we decided not to do that ramp, or we, we haven't decided yet, but.
Right.
That was the recommendation not to do that. I mean, like, that's sort of where the rubber meets the road.
It's that last, the, the behind ramp, the service.
Yeah, the, the service ramp isn't, isn't an access issue, that's just, the ramp is there for book carts, not for, um, wheelchairs.
Oh, I see.
There's a front of a ramp.
You should talk to my wife about that, seriously.
Okay.
That's her field.
Okay.
We're moving on. Anything else, Tom?
I'm done, that's it.
Good.
That didn't cost us anything, good job.
Well, you know.
Right now, we've got, right, we, we didn't have any additions to the operating budget, Alex.
So I've gone back and forth, uh, with the, the police chief and I think he probably sent you something, with some more information about the crossing guards. And I still haven't quite figured out what the hit is. And, and, and I'm actually trying to get to the point, you know, I'm, I'm not necessarily against what he's doing, but I, I wanna make sure I completely understand it and I don't. So I guess what I'm hoping to do is on the sixteenth, which is when we meet next, is to be in a position to propose adding something to that or not.
Okay, you get a, you get a deferral, that's fine.
Well, I mean, I just don't have the information.
Yeah, right, and do you have anything else besides that you want to add? No, okay, so, so I'm.
Well, unless, unless you're talking my, my additions to the school budget.
Yeah, no, we're gonna, we're gonna talk about that separately, um. Wait a second, you gave me power of attorney here. I'll, I'll give it back in a second.
Go ahead.
So, so the way I see this, we've got potential additions of ten thousand dollars for a pilot breakfast program at the adult center, potential addition of thirty-five thousand for a new police vehicle, a second police vehicle, potential addition of four, two thousand dollars to restore four mailings on our taxes, potential addition of two thousand dollars to, uh, for voter machine programming for our additional elections and a potential addition to be determined for crossing guards. Okay, that, those are the additions to the, the March third budget. And we've got potential reductions of some amount of money by using the health insurance trust, up to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, but we may choose to only use part of that. Paul, I assume that if we only wanted to use enough to save sixty thousand, we can only use a fraction of that, is that correct?
Well, again, historically, we've, we've used one percent, which is about sixty-five, and that's what I was gonna move forward with.
Is that already in the plan?
Yes.
So in order to get a hundred and twenty, we'd have to use an additional, or a hundred and thirty, we'd have to use an additional sixty-five. In other words, when you put in a budget for.
Well, when I, when I put in the budget, there's already a, a, an assumption that one percent was gonna be used. So in, in essence, I said that we could use three percent, the incremental amount is only two percent.
Which is about a.
It's not even gonna be, it's gonna be, you know, the town is about sixty-five, thirty-five from what the town's gonna get out of that hundred and thirty. Um, so it's gonna be less than a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
You have to say that one more time for me.
I had said that three percent would be about a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars.
In savings.
In, in savings overall to town and employee and retiree and, and everybody. Well, the assumption was that we're already using one percent, so it's an additional two percent increment that we could put in.
So we could save, if we saved the full two percent, we would save an additional?
One hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Okay.
Of which the town shares about a sixty-five percent portion of that.
Wait a minute, actually, I, when we were talking about this before, I had written down, if we took a hundred and ninety-five thousand out of the two fifty, that would realize a hundred and twenty.
Yeah, I said.
But, but you were.
You're right, and I'm assuming.
But the sixty-five is already in there.
The, the, right, the sixty-five was al- already in there, so I have to back the sixty, sixty out, or the sixty-five out.
So, so we're really only getting another.
Getting the difference.
Sixty to the better of where we are right now.
No, you would get sixty-five percent of a hundred and thirty thousand is eighty-four thousand five hundred.
Eighty-four, eighty-five thousand dollars.
Okay, so, so it's taking a hundred and ninety-five versus what's in there now, sixty-five?
The assumption was to use sixty-five, right, so we're, we're using the net, the additional debt.
Okay, so taking a hundred and ninety-five versus sixty-five benefits us from where we are now, eighty-four thousand.
Right, and, and the other amount would be benefited by the employees and retirees.
So one by one. Let's start at the bottom of the easiest ones. Voter machine programming, is, is anybody objecting to adding two thousand dollars to supplement the voting machine programming, so we can have fair elections or, that we don't have, no, so you don't have to pull the money out of reserves or something else.
Why don't we refrain from voting though, cause Marie will be here on the sixteenth. Let's just do our list.
All right, so, well, I just added them up, Mark. It looks like the things you just identified is sixty thousand seven hundred dol-, sixty thousand seven hundred plus to be determined on the crossing guards.
Where'd you get that much?
No, because eleven thousand seven hundred for the Bliss tennis courts.
No, that's already in it, that's already in.
Whoops, all right, sorry.
So we should have forty-nine thousand.
Yeah, forty-nine thousand.
All right, so that's forty-nine thousand. Okay, so forty-nine thousand plus to be determined crossing guards.
And Marie's got one here that's on, not determined, cause she needs to find it better.
And, and you laughed at my hundred thousand dollar number, Alex, cause I.
No, I, I didn't laugh at it, but I mean, it's a bit of an artificial exercise, that's all.
Hey, you know, what the heck, I, I'm not, I'm not gonna be that bad off.
Keep it timed in, we'll take you out of power.
Okay, so, so that's the, that's the first step, right? The next step, we, and so Wednesday, we're gonna vote on, on these along with, I presume, a number that Alex is gonna try to assess, which could be anywhere from zero to something higher than zero for crossing guard additions.
Correct.
Right, okay.
Okay, so let's, you wanna go capital next or?
Sure, let's do capital next, okay?
And see, this is where I feel a little hamstrung, cause I don't have a piece of paper that adds it all up.
Well, let's see what we can do with what we've got, Alex, as they say.
Do you wanna go, well, he's got, he's got one point. You wanna, you were talking about money for schools, Alex?
Um, yeah, I mean, before I propose it, I'd wanna tug at them, I mean, you know, it's, it would be for the health teacher.
Okay, well, why, is it, there's not much time left, I mean, we're running out of time.
All right, well, since Janet's here, how, how much, could you just remind us, I know you took that out, how much would be the, for the fifth grade health teacher?
By, by the way, folks, we've been joined by the, uh, chair of the school committee, they had their meeting tonight and she's walked in, Janet Robinson's in the room with us. She's not at a mic station right now, maybe we can, if she's gonna give a presentation, we'll get a mic station.
And that's quite okay that I'm not at a mic station.
You are now.
Yes, so.
Now we'll get our mic.
The fifth grade health teacher in curriculum was twenty-four, four twenty-nine.
Twenty-four, four twenty-nine. And, and Janet, that's still out of your budget, is that right?
Correct, that is not, it has not been added back into our budget at this time.
Okay.
Can I make a comment, Alex, before you, while you're, while you're writing about capital?
Yep.
Um, to some extent, this is where the, you know, um, you can rank all the projects and just say, if we have this much money, then we're gonna cut the list off here. Um, that's not the approach that I took when I presented to the, to the capital planning committee, cause sometimes some needs are, when you, I don't know, it's hard to prioritize a hundred percent effectively in that, and when you get into the nitty-gritty of the things. So what I would recommend is figure out what the number we are gonna fund capital at and then backfill the projects, just as a suggestion to the board.
We haven't really done it.
Well, what I.
I mean, I, I just wanna see how the number, I mean, I have a, the list of numbers and there's no total.
So, so, well, I can give you the total, Alex, cause I, I, if you wanna do that.
Amy will do that sheet, if you wanna just add the sum.
No, I've got the thing, I mean, but it, it doesn't, I mean, Dr. Metz said that he did add it up and he had some things that were higher priority and some were lower priority, it's just not on this thing. And I'm not blaming anybody formatting the, you know, Excel is problematic sometimes.
But what we really need is, uh, you know, a prioritized project list, how much that costs and the running total.
Right.
And to, to, I guess it's a, what you just said, Stephen, but my mind would be, let's decide how much we can spend on capital and from my position, then see, okay, what did we, what would that money have done? And then we say, gee, we really think something below it is, is more important than something above it, and maybe then we switch. But I think it's more important to say, we think we can only fund capital at, you know, at one point four, four, four million dollars, let's see what that does. And the other thing is if the next incremental thing is two hundred thousand dollars and we were only gonna fund another fifty, we can say, okay, we don't have to go up two hundred thousand dollars, we know where we are. So, you know, sometimes because of the incremental amount of the capital items and what we have been able to put into capital, you may end up moving up a twenty-three thousand dollar truck ahead of where it could be, because you can fund that, whereas you can't fund the eighty-five thousand dollar truck.
I, I, I agree with that, in, in some extent, we do that internally. The difference maker is the capital, the, a, a significant chunk of the capital funding is for general categories, pavement, sidewalks, guardrail. So you may say, if you start off and say, we want seven hundred thousand dollars worth of asphalt and then you get to your projects, but you may get to the point where you're like, you know what, asphalt's important, but we only need six hundred and this other hundred thousand dollar thing is important, and that's where the overall number is.
I hear you, but that's not the way we've done it, and I'm not gonna say last year, but in, in previous years, what we've taken is said, whether it's asphalt or sidewalk, and split it into three increments. So because, you know, yeah, you can always say, we're gonna spend, you know, a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars on, on asphalt. But to say, look, if we wanna spend seven fifty, let's break it into three increments of two fifty and we'll see which increments we take out. And then you're only moving a part of one of those smaller increments as opposed to, I got a seven hundred thousand dollar bucket in here and I'm gonna take out part of that, you know, cause the, your, what you described presumes it's all or as much of that as you can get, and what I'm saying is, we may wanna do it in multiple increments, that's, that's the only difference. And so it, it, in, you know, the way I would like to see us do, whether it's sidewalks or asphalt, is, you know, we're gonna do sidewalks one, asphalt one, sidewalks two, asphalt two, then we're gonna do sidewalks three, but not a, never get to the, whatever it is. And ha, and, and it's just a different approach, Stephen.
To get to the same place.
But you, you do.
No, I, I, I'm saying to get to the same place, I, I just find, for me, it's easier to just say, okay, what's the pie and then what can we cram in it?
But, but from my perspective, it's easy to say, a second, a second shot of asphalt roads can come before these other capital projects.
Okay, well, Metz is gonna get us back to his other paperwork too.
Right, but I, I think we have to look at, you know, I'm, and, and, cause I, the, the things I did here got pretty close to, clear to me, that last year we spent one point, we appropriated one point four one six, a million four hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. And this year, our policy is a million six hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars.
And then, but in the latest thing, so you've got it as two twenty-nine, the town manager's recommendation.
No.
Is that the same thing as the three, three?
No, that's okay, my, my, my la, the latest town manager's recommendation.
No, you, cause on your sheet, you've got latest, two twenty-nine town manager's recommendation, capital one point five one two.
Right.
Is that what we're operating right now on? Like, as a, the thing that you sent on March third?
On, on March third, we are operating at one four seven five.
Right, March third it dropped.
One million four hundred seventy-five thousand dollars is in the March third proposal.
Cause that, you had, you had already put in a reduction.
They took out another hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars, right?
And Paul, is, I've got both of those spreadsheets up that you put on three, three.
Yep.
Where is that?
Line twenty-three of the, of the vertical one.
Sources and uses one.
Okay.
Line twenty-three, it says one million four seventy-five, Alex. Follow it?
So, twenty-three.
It's page one.
I got you. Okay, I'm there with you. All right, so we're, we're operating.
At three, three, we're operating one million four seven.
At one four. Gotcha.
Seventy-five, and the question is, do we wanna start by saying, what do we, what do we get for a million four seven, seventy-five, which is the town manager's proposal?
I mean, I guess I'd like to find out is what, what did these numbers add up that Dr. Metz recommended, you know? I mean, that would be where I'd.
Well, his, his recommendation, he said, was one point two million dollars.
One point six two million dollars.
Yeah, it's, it's higher than one point two. A million dollars is in roads and sidewalks.
Right.
He, he has a total here of one point six two nine.
Okay.
Um, I'm not sure.
At the bottom, that sheet you have in front of you.
I don't.
Appendix B.
But his letter's got a. Wait a minute, one point, I thought that was the. Wait a minute, one point, I thought that was the-
No, that one point six, two, nine drives with his narrative as well.
One point, but that's-
It's one point six, two, three on his narrative.
There was discrepancy in the-
Wait a minute, but that, that's, that one point six, two, nine, that's a different column than the general fund contribution, which is what we had been focusing on.
That, that would be, that one point six would be if you fully funded your policy. That's what I originally gave, that's what I originally presented, because I was, I started off, I, I mean, you know, Richard made the comment about, I should be asking for four million dollars worth of things if we're gonna do it the right way. We do take the approach of asking for the amount that would fully fund the policy.
Right.
You are correct. In the bottom of the thing, he did say that they ultimately recommended, required one point six, two, nine, five, oh, three.
No, but, see, Richard.
Well, yeah, but see, this doesn't agree with that.
I, well, see, you see, we were dealing with this column here, you see, but this, this is the ones that he was recommending.
Right.
You go down to the bottom, there's no sum.
And I added them up, and they don't, they don't come up to the one point six, nine, five, oh, three.
Yeah, I don't think it would.
They, they don't, there's something, there's something-
Because he, they didn't recommend everything the town manager-
Well, I mean, even his, even he said his program would be one point six, two, nine, five, oh, three. Yeah. And, and the program didn't add up to that. Remember I talked to you about that, Stephen, today? I said his figures aren't adding up.
Well, and then I heard, he, he said something about one point five million, like one point five, one, two, or something like that.
Yeah.
So it's awfully hard to-
But we, I mean, we can do this right now, because I've got the list of things he approved. Yeah, I mean, it's pretty simple. He had the project of twenty-five thousand, the project reserves of ten thousand, the school IT of thirty thousand, right? Russell Fields of, of five thousand, the, uh-
No, I see all those things, it's, like, what does that add up to?
Well, I'm, okay, well, I'm just, I just wanna make sure I got the right list, and then I'll add them up. The Esplanade storage of eighty-four thousand, fire truck of a hundred thousand, and DPW vehicle.
Well, and, yeah, okay, that's what he said.
Right? And the DPW had, had twenty-one, one thirteen, sixty thousand, fifty-four thousand, thirty-eight, nine hundred, twenty-five thousand, twenty-six, three si-
Twenty-eight. Twenty-eight, three sixty-two.
Oh, twenty-eight, three sixty-two, and ninety-four thousand, right?
Yep.
Now, he also, for the fire truck annual contribution-
So that was worth five hundred and seventy-five thousand, three seventy-five, if I did it right.
Five hundred and seven, say that again?
Five, seven, five, three, eight, five?
Five, seven, five.
I'll do it again.
Three, eight, five.
Did you include the sidewalks?
Not yet.
Okay.
And then, and then he changed the numbers, where it says six fifty is really five fifty.
So, I, I guess it's one, six, nine, seven, three, ninety?
One, six, nine-
Seven, three, ninety.
One million, six hundred ninety-seven thousand. Okay, so that's the, so that's the five seventy-five that Mark just added up, plus the five fifty, plus the four forty, plus fifty?
Plus one twenty-two fifteen.
Plus one twenty-two. Okay.
The, the only thing that they, the committee did recommend, having a hundred and fifty thousand dollar allocation for the fire truck.
They're, they're, they wanna put away too much money.
I mean, my recommendation would be to take that note entirely.
Yeah, but it's one extra fifty thousand.
I had five seventy-five, three seventy-five.
Doesn't cost that much.
Right, add, add another mil- million for sidewalks and roads.
Right.
And one twenty-two, oh, fifteen for the outlet repair.
Right. I mean, my-
What, what, what? Oh, okay, a mi, oh, a hundred and twenty-two, oh, fifteen, right.
Right.
You know, here's my suggestion right off the bat. Take out the fire truck contribution. If we're going to, uh, bond the next engine, we're gonna be in pretty good shape for a while, right? We will just replace two twenty-five-year machines. So, it seems like this year, we could do without that, if we're gonna bond at six hundred thousand. So that would get us a hundred thousand closer.
I'm gonna talk against that only because I was the, the father of the sinking fund for fire trucks.
But did you hear, there's nothing on the horizon.
Okay, well, why don't we, why don't we, and I-
I hear you.
Officially, that's on camera, too. There's no reason to have that a hundred thousand, but why don't we look at it and maybe take it down to thirty-five thousand or something, that will, can build up and replace the next one after the one we bond? I, I think we're caught on bonding this next one. If, if it's, if it's in fact due now-
Right, I mean, right, we have to do it.
Yeah, and we could keep this in the account, because I hate, like, the devil see this disappear, because we've conditioned ourselves to put money upfront in that account every year. And if we dropped it to fifty, likely to fifty, what, what would it be, seven, eight more years for the next one, Stephen? You have, Paul, any, any?
I don't have, I don't think that I have his, actually, you know, yes, I do.
Supposed to be every seven years.
Hold on a second.
But we're awesome.
Yes, I do have that.
We are, we are, we bunch two together, but we still, we still must have a seven-year extension for the other one, after this, Alex.
No, he was saying the next thing was an ambulance, which-
Well, yeah, but that, that's already-
That's out of a different fund. That's out of the ambulance.
So we're even better off.
Well, but this is just a fire, this is just a fire truck account.
Right, right.
So, so, twenty, twenty, uh, what, the fire inspection car-
No, that's-
Thirty-five thousand, no, these aren't really capital items.
Get the big one.
It's, it's the F three fifty. It's, no, the next one coming up is the F three fifty.
Squad.
Squad four would be FY twenty, twenty-three.
Twenty, twenty-three, so that's, oh, that's a bunch of years out there. Six years, and what's it cost on three hundred thousand?
He does have in FY eighteen, uh, medic one, which would be that Ford ambulance, but that's the ambulance.
Right. The, the next major purchase, the squad-
He's carrying two, two-ten for the, the squad four in twenty, twenty-three.
Two, two hundred and ten thousand.
Yeah.
And then the next, once that fire truck do, it's pretty close thereafter, isn't it?
Which one? The Quint is do the next, in the Twin, the Quint would in theory be-
No, not, not the Quint. There's a third truck.
There's a, yeah. There's something between now and twenty, twenty-three.
Yeah, there's something in there, a big truck.
Oh, engine one.
Engine one.
It's twenty, twenty-four.
Twenty, twenty-four?
Yeah.
Wait a minute, engine one, that's the Quint?
No, Quint is ladder one.
Twenty, twenty-four, what's it cost on twenty, twenty-four, six hundred or seven?
Six hundred, yeah.
Six hundred thousand.
See, so why do we have twenty, twenty-three and twenty, twenty-four? That shouldn't happen.
Right.
Yeah, well, the squad's at twenty, twenty-three, right?
Yeah.
That's what you just said, but it shouldn't happen. I mean-
So we know we got those coming up, so if we, we could backfigure on this and find out how much money we wanna leave in there.
Yeah, I mean, at this, yeah, I mean, at this point, it's the condition of the vehicles at later years, I mean, I, I do think you need to continue, keep, continue contributing. But if you just, I mean, I guess what I'd recommend is just keep the hundred in for, even if it's to offset the debt service on the bond. But you're right, I mean, if it's, if we're trying to close a gap, maybe you give it up for the year.
The other thing we haven't discussed on this is the playground equipment, um, if we're going to-
It's cap, oh, that's good, community preservation.
They, they highlighted, they said reposition it, so that's-
Didn't it refer to community preservation on that?
It says a valuing option for repositioning exi- equip, existing equipment.
Right. So they're not funding it because they think they can be repositioned.
And so, so we don't have to figure out the price on that?
No, that's expense size, that's, do that in the budget.
Okay. Alright, then I guess we're, uh-
So, Stephen, can I ask you a question? You high, so you have priorities on everything, but those two you had highlighted, and there is no priority on it. Like, there's no ranking.
On the playground equipment?
Correct. Um, and why is that? I mean, because schools had, had a ranking on everything else. Why, why weren't, why didn't they have a ranking on that?
Uh, I, I didn't submit it to the capital planning, and I don't remember why I highlighted it, but I know that it was, um, I thought we were gonna submit it to capital, I thought we were gonna, I, I, actually, I originally highlighted, and the highlights never came out, because I was intended to submit it to capital, to Community Preservation Act, and we didn't submit it there.
Can we infer that it's priority three and four? Because you've got, schools want, are you looking at the same thing I'm?
Yeah, DPW thirteen, school four. We have not looked at, we have not looked at the viability of relocating the existing preschool equipment from center school to Wolf Swamp.
I, I'm not sure, yeah, I mean, that's a good question. I mean, whether you can really do that.
We, I don't know, I haven't looked at the viability of that yet.
Because if we can't move, we have to buy new ones.
We have to buy new.
We'd have to figure that out tonight?
That's where, no, that's where you talk to the PTO or PTA and say, what, what do you wanna do for new school, new equipment?
I don't know, well, maybe this is where Janet could help us out. Uh, so, so Janet, Dr. Metz was here, and he was talking about the playground equipment at Wolf Swamp School, and it was his judgment, after having looked at it, or-
Whose judgment, I'm sorry?
Dr. Metz.
Capital planning.
And, and other, maybe other people, Capital Planning Committee, they had looked at the equipment, they thought it wasn't in that bad a condition, and so it wasn't a higher priority. So we're trying to figure out what-
It's not that the playground equipment at Wolf Swamp is in bad condition.
Okay.
It's the fact that the preschool is now located at Wolf Swamp.
Right, right.
And there's not age-appropriate playground equipment there. And we, I think it was looked at when we talked about moving the program from center to Wolf Swamp. And it was the judgment, um, of facilities, town, whatever, that the, the playground that was at center could not be moved.
Okay.
Therefore, so what they've, so what they've been doing, um, is they've, when they take the preschoolers out, they've cordoned off an area that is age-appropriate, um, so they are allotted to play in that one particular area.
Right.
Um, you know, and their playtime is different than, than the K through five. But, um, you know, it was, that, that is part of the preschool program, which is an inclusion program, that there would be appropriate equipment.
Right. Okay, so that problem is kinda hanging out there.
That problem is still hanging, yes.
And the thing that we have on our sheet, it has one item for Wolf Swamp, playground equipment replacement, eighty thousand. And then another item says preschool playground equipment, forty thousand.
I'm speaking to the preschool part. I don't know what the playground equipment at eighty, I thought that-
But what you're talking about is the forty thousand.
Is the forty thousand.
Gotcha.
I thought that all of the schools were on a cyclical replacement plan for playground equipment.
Okay.
Um-
Do you, do you have any actual cost estimates on this?
They got quotes.
Okay. I, I assume they didn't come in at forty thousand, though.
The, the quotes are in the-
Some variation of there. I never trust a quote that comes in even dollars, I just-
I, I don't, I'd have to go back and-
I'm, I'm sure if it was from Mr. Mazza, it would be down to the penny.
Yeah, because real life says-
No, they got, they got a quote from, uh, I mean, it could have been like thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars or whatever.
Were they talking, have you done the feasibility on moving the equipment?
I have not.
Well, she just said that.
I, I don't know who had done, I don't know whether it was previous facilities, previous DPW, um-
I, I don't know that, I, I don't recall having a conversation about moving the stuff, but-
Yeah, because, I mean, it can be moved.
Maybe, I, I don't-
I, I think due to the age of it-
Well, that, that's, well, that's a different factor, though.
Is that, I, I think due to the age, it was said that it wouldn't be able to be moved, but again, I could be wrong.
Yeah, like it would be damaged if it was-
Correct.
This is, this is not lightweight stuff.
You know, I know that we've, you know, had turnover in both DPW and facilities since then, so I, I don't know.
And this is the one at Williams, right?
No.
Or at Wolf Swamp, Stephen?
No, it's currently at center.
Oh, it's currently at center, they wanna move it to Wolf Swamp.
Correct, because that's where the preschool program is.
The equipment that we just replaced?
No, this was just the preschool. Um, the preschool had a separate unit.
Okay, a little separate unit. Okay, and we're talking a pretty small unit, Alex.
Right, because, you know, the preschool program isn't, I think it's twenty children per section.
I'll be over there with my tractor tomorrow, we'll pick it up and move it.
Will, will you pay the cost for damage?
And the insurance and liability at all?
Yeah, no problem. I cover, I'm self-insured, no problem.
Excellent.
As long as you give me the forty thousand.
Hey, Paul, can I, can I just go back for a second? If, if I'm right, the Capital Planning Committee's total is one million, six, ninety-seven, three, ninety.
Yep.
And the town manager's last recommendation is one million, four seventy-five, with a difference of two hundred and twenty-two thousand, three, ninety.
Okay.
So that-
I didn't do the difference, but-
Well, I did the difference, so, so, so that from the list that Dr. Metz presented us this evening, we would have to cut two twenty-two, three ninety, to get back to the capital expenditure level, if we wanted to get to what the town manager recommended on March third.
That would be correct.
Alternatively, if we go above that number, we've gotta find additional revenue, I guess, or cut somewhere else.
My, my recommendation would be to, to let me take these, redo another iteration of the budget with the, all the assumptions highlighted. I would put in the high number for the, uh, capital, um, make an assumption, um, on the school budget. Um, add, again, I would add in all the additions that came across the table, and then give you a point of reference to start with on Wednesday night.
But, but then we'd be at a point where we have to start cutting things, and I'd rather be at a place where we have to add stuff. And, and it's semantics, I understand that, but, but once you guys put them in the budget, it's pulling teeth to get them out, as opposed to, they're not in there, and we add them. That's my opinion, and I'm welcome to other people saying something different.
I, I can use the assumption of one, four, seven, five.
What, what, actually, here, what about the thing that we did, I know we did two years ago, where we, uh, bonded, within the levy limit? It was like a project, it was like, I don't know, a million dollars, and that freed up, are you remembering? This was your idea, Mark.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
Um, he hated it.
Yeah. And, uh-
It's another credit card purchase.
But, but, I mean, it's legitimate, because these are capital projects.
Well, everything's legitimate, if you wanna frame it, it's being legitimate.
Well, no, but it's, no, I mean, we're, we're paying overtime, something that has a useful life, overtime.
Remember, override your legitimate, too.
Yeah, and, and I think-
So, so you want an override?
I, I think what I did at the time, Alex, was had, had this grand, another grand scheme, where every year, we'd commit part of our capital to borrowing and paying off the-
That was later, that was later.
That was the year later, okay.
That was later.
That one crashed and burned.
Well, hey, at least I'm thinking outside the box, you know?
Yeah, you're way out.
So, I mean, the, the question is, I mean, I'm sitting here, you know, with monopolizing, what do we wanna do to close the two hundred and twenty-two thousand, three, ninety?
What's wrong with his last proposal? If he goes ahead and puts the sheet together, and I'd like to-
He gotta cut a lot of stuff.
I like it that way, too. If he comes in, he says, okay, here's what you want, here's how much you gotta cut to balance the budget. And then, well, all we're doing is looking at, at things to cut, instead of playing, going back and forth this way. I, I really like his approach better, for my management style.
I, I mean, unless I've heard something dramatically wrong, we're only in the position of cutting right now.
Yeah.
No, that, that's not true.
How, how so?
You gotta cut something.
Because I, what we've looked at so far is, on the general government side, we've got a hundred thousand dollars we can add back into the system.
Wait a minute. How's, from?
Okay, if you're using the three, three budget, you're, the answer is, you're right. Anything we add in, we gotta cut out. But you've already made two, and that's why the, the multiple budgets is driving me crazy, you know, I'm having tough finding, because, following, because we're not, you've made two cuts to capital and two cuts to OPEB from the, from the policies. Right? You made a cut on February twenty-ninth, and another cut on March third, right? And what I'm, what I fear is gonna happen is, when we put in all these great things we want, now all of a sudden, the whole budget is open for cutting other things.
Well, the whole budget is open for cutting other things, but that's what you must do to get it to balance.
No, I mean, you know, one way of dealing with this two twenty-two is to, again, take the hundred thousand from the fire truck, bond the outlet repair for a hundred and twenty-two, and then just cut back on pavement, probably by fifty.
You already cut pavement back.
I, I, I don't, I think the policy for bonding, it's, the hundred and twenty-two is-
It's too low.
It's too low, you'd have too many fixed costs associated with that.
Okay.
And, and why would we do that? Because we don't have enough money? Right?
Right.
Okay. I just wanna make sure we're all talking the same thing.
But, I mean, but we're doing things that we've typically done.
Yeah, I'll get the credit card, and we'll put it right up here. I agree, I agree, it's time to do, use credit. By the way, Alex, uh, that hundred thousand dollars is the appropriate amount to fund the future two increases that we got, it goes almost to the penny. We got eight years to, to get eight hundred thousand, eight hundred and ten thousand gathered up, to keep from bonding out on that. And that is a decision we can make. We can either bond it, or we can, we can save it.
Actually, on that point, is the Quint not a twenty-five-year truck?
No, it's a twenty-five-year thing. I, I was, the title said engine one, and then I looked over- And then I looked over, I was reading it wrong.
All right.
Okay. The, the other thing I'll, I'll note, since the chair of the school committee's here, is that, um, perhaps, you know, the schools are a direct beneficiary of us, of, of a substantial component of that capital funding monies. Those, those funds for capital funding also directly benefit the schools. Perhaps we could engage the school committee again in a conversation about, um, you know, what are our priorities and the fact that we're looking to cut things because of, um, a budget shortfall? Based on the budget that they recommended to the select board. I mean, is, I, I mean, I'm not trying to, it's not, I'm not trying to engage in gamesmanship, it's more, this, you know, the schools have set their priorities, and the town has, you know, now has to set its, but I, I wanna remind the select board that there are, you know, school-specific projects that are a part of this, um, that should probably be prioritized in the overall operating budget, in the context of the overall operating budget.
Stephen, I, I agree with you, my, my concern continues to remain, we're killing ourselves over a, a percent or less of a budget based on revenue assumptions that we know are wrong. And by slightly adjusting the revenue assumptions, or at least accommodating the increased revenue, we now, at least I now believe is gonna be there at least in one of those revenue line items, we can put a lot of this behind us. Or alleviate a lot of the consternations that we're going through right now, be, by just saying, look, we're gonna have seventy thousand dollars more revenue. That's seventy thousand dollars of a hit we don't have to have somewhere.
But your plan only works with their commitment, with the school committee's commitment, that one, if chapter seventy comes in more favorably, 'cause you know, act, every year, right, don't they, they get their chapter seventy, maybe they go back and they adjust their budget?
No, chapter seventy comes to the general fund.
No, it's only special revenues.
The special revenues, right, right, right.
They adjust their budget, but it's the chapter seventy that I wanna commit to increases to the town side. Rather than, now, we can do it two ways, we can do it in this, in the, you know, May town meeting, or we can wait till see where it is, and then we go in the fall, but if we do it in the fall, what happens is, we've lost that time period for capital. Now, if we're gonna commit it all to OPEB, just say, okay, instead of making the investment in Ju- July first, we make the investment December first.
You've lost a year, you've lost a year on capital.
Right, right, I'm, but, but I'm saying, we could, we could commit that entire increase to OPEB.
And the other thing that we don't crank into there, some of these projects are time-sensitive, so the prices are going.
Again, Richard, that's why I'm saying maybe we do it with the OPEB, which.
I would be, I would be more agreeable to you to stake it out of OPEB, as much as I hate to go against our policy, I'd be more inclined to say that.
All I'm saying is, if, if the revenues come in higher than we, than we assumed in the program, you know, we oughta be able to, to, to take advantage of that.
'Cause you, you have to remember, and everybody should pay attention to this, too, 'cause this is the reality, you ask for people to start being programmatic. If you keep messing around with the funds that you give your engineering department to plan projects and to get specifications up, you're mixing the whole puzzle sideways, because you're actually, you're shut, shutting down efforts, and it's a hard thing to get them regenerated. The, the tip program is, is pretty typical, if we hadn't given the design money for Converse Road, Converse Road never would've been put in the tip program. And I, this board, five, six years ago, was raising cane about setting aside that hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars that it took to do the preliminary engineering, and now we see the benefit. That's why, that's why I would favor going OPEB, because that's less disruptive on our internal organization of our people working, trying to make programs work. And you need to keep the engineering department full, full up speed and guaranteed X amount of dollars, and you know this, Stephen, yourself. Programs sometimes take three years to develop, and you just start and stop, it kills them.
So, so, fine, I'm gonna take this the next step, Richard. Generally, in the fall, we use those additional revenues, right, Paul, to, to clean up and balance the budget, the number one item being snow and ice removal, right? Snow removal. So, can we get a, a preliminary hearing with this relatively, you know, light-demand winter, I know we, we used a lot, of how much additional snow we may be looking at, to know whether we can make a commitment now to use those additional revenues for something like OPEB in the fall, and not have to have it for, for, balance the budget on snow removal, right? Is that a?
I'm not, we don't usually do anything in the fall with snow removal.
When do we do that?
In the spring.
That's right.
After we have the numbers from the previous winter.
So we're gonna balance this year's.
So we use free cash in the spring, right?
Right, right, right now, there's a, there's a proposed article, 'cause we may be a little over the hundred thousand.
Even this year, we get over there?
I, again, we're, we're teetering, and it depends on what happens over the next couple of weeks. If, if not, I mean, last year's an example, we used two hundred and some odd thousand, but it's, it's done in the spring, once we have the actual numbers in from the previous six months.
Right.
Okay, so, so what is it in the fall that there is no standard?
The last, two, two years ago, I asked for the money to increase debt service payments, to accelerate, um, the, the payment schedules on certain, um, bond anticipation, there's certain bond authorizations that we had. Um, last year, I think I asked for, last year I asked for some money in debt, I needed money in unemployment, I needed money in liability insurance. Um, I'm trying to think of, there were about four or five.
And those are likely to, those may come up again.
I gotta wrap this.
Okay.
So, Richard, I'd, I'd like to concur in your recommendation to have Paul do what you proposed. And I, and the only thing I would ask is, just so we could discuss it, having that twenty-four, four twenty-nine for the health teacher as part of, part of the, yes.
Well, again, it, it, I would work with the March second budget.
Yeah.
Which Stephen had an increase from his original s- school appropriation, I'll work with that number, so if anybody's looking, I will add in all those things, inclusive of the twenty-four thousand for the health agent.
Right.
And, um, for, I guess, for O- OPEB, I'm gonna, and, and O capital, I'll continue with what Stephen had on that, on that budget also.
So it's gonna be a deficit budget? So you're gonna show the amount of expenditures over revenue?
Right, and so in, so in two days, that's what we're gonna work with, with all five of us here.
Yeah, and, and I'd like to remind you, before it gets to the magic hour and the lights start to go out, that we've got, uh, squinty, some articles that we're gonna have to be discussing and filling in some dollar values on some of them at our next meeting, so it's gonna be a, a pretty full meeting, uh, plus we're gonna have to bring Marie up to speed, so I would, I would ask everybody to keep that in mind, 'cause we only have one more meeting before we go to the forum.
But we don't have to take the warrant to the forum.
No, I know we don't, but we better be prepared to talk at the forum.
Right, well, I mean, and.
Budget should be settled.
Well, Richard, you know, I was gonna say, I mean, it's, it's also possible that we could pres- sort of present a budget that's not fully worked out, in that we take the input from the forum.
Oh, yeah.
And making the final decisions.
That will be, that will be added, but we've gotta get as much as we can predetermined, Alex.
No, I, I agree.
And we may be okay, we've got what, one more meeting, Stephen, and then we have the forum, and then the twenty-first is when we vote the budget. And that's when we, we seal the warrant and vote the budget, and we've already got several agenda items that are on the twenty-first meeting beside budget, so that's gonna be more coming back with a pretty demanding, uh, agenda. So as long as everybody's in agreement, if we can maybe center much tighter, we've got a lot of talking on the way tonight, I hope, so we can settle down a little bit more to crunching figures strictly in that next meeting.
So it's sixteen, we're, we're gonna meet the sixteenth at seven.
Sixteenth at seven, and it'll be, and I think eighth at, or, at the other room, will be televised. So, Paul, you get the thing up, and, and if you can get that all in, and we'll just work through it, Mark, okay?
Yeah, that's fine, I mean, I, you know, the additions weren't that, you know, we'll see what they come to be, but they.
We'll just have to make, we'll have to take a vote that night on how we're gonna approach, uh, the deficit. Okay, folks, I appreciate you coming in, ladies and gentlemen, you're gonna watch us in tape, I don't know if you'll see us before our next meeting televised, but in case you do, uh, we'll see you at that meeting in two more days, at which time we're going to hopefully finalize the budget discussion and get ready for a public hearing.